Community input is encouraged and welcomed. Input must be informational in nature and address the entire board rather than one particular member. The Board of Education cannot engage in a discussion or debate in response, but we will take the information for review and direct to the appropriate district employee to respond. Community input opportunities are available on the district website or in person. Limited seating is available at the district office at the night of the meeting. We are using screening and social distancing. Tonight, there was one community input regarding the National Anthem, and it has been passed on to Superintendent Willie Jett. Can you hear me? Yes, okay. This meeting is called to order. It is February 3rd, 2021, and it is 6:32 PM. Our mission is to provide a safe and caring climate and culture in which we engage, inspire, educate, prepare, and empower all learners in partnership with their surrounding community to be successful in today's and tomorrow's society. Les, will you please lead us in the Pledge Allegiance?
That's my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the public, for which it stands, the nation, under God, with physical liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Les. Will now, will you please call Roll?
Shannon Hogg.
Here at the district office.
Honesty, Superior, and Church.
Here at the district's office.
Al Dalgren.
Here at the district office.
Natalie Reinsland.
Here at the district office.
Zach Roehl.
Here at the office.
Les Green is here at the district office.
Scott and Grayson.
Here at the district office.
Also, in attendance remotely, the Superintendent Willie Jett, Assistant Superintendent Almeida, the Chastity, that's a hundred five. Assistant Superintendent, the second area of Chastity, the Lord of the Company, Executive Director of Learning and Teaching, Mary House, Executive Director of Student Services, Strategic Chastity, Carol Potter, Deputy Director of Public Security, without religion, Chastity, Lord of the Company, that's the square of the hospital. Deputy Director of Security, U.S. Department of Defense, Al Dalgren, Deputy Director of Astronomy, Raising Private, Calvary, Deputy District Corporation, Barry Donkey, Deputy Director of Children's Services, places playing out, Director of Youth Engagement, places, it's hanging around, Director of Civility, all these two, Director of Technology, Ryan Cox, Deputy District, Dan McLeod.
Thank you, Les.
Chair Hoss?
Yes.
So, just as a point of, I don't know if it's clarification, myself, Willie Jett, and the two Assistant Superintendents, Dr. Marcia Beish and Dr. Lori Putton, are here at the district office. And then, the one thing I just wanted to add, in terms of being able to hear Dr. Green, we could barely hear Dr. Green, not sure if he's using a microphone, but just so people that are in that room know, because I'm not looking directly in the room, that people might need to speak up for the moment. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I just, uh, the left to right, you can check on my, um, my, 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 my.
Does Dr. Green need some technical assistance?
I think so. We can hear him, but it's confusing because I can hear him because he's sitting next to us.
Got it. We will have someone come and check in.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up, I'm looking for approval of tonight's board meeting agenda and work session agenda. I have a motion by Scott and a second by Al. Les, can you please call Roll?
Yes. Shannon Hogg?
Yes.
Honesty, Superior, and Church.
Here.
Al Dalgren?
Yes.
Natalie Reinsland?
Yes.
Zach Roehl?
Yes.
Les Green is yes. Scott and Grayson?
Yes.
How is that?
Again, you're sitting next to me, so I think you are being picked up by mine.
I'll let you go up there.
Next up is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of non-controversial items that the board adopts routinely without debate. Any single member may remove an item from this consent agenda by requesting removal at the time the consent agenda is moved for adoption. On tonight's consent agenda, Item A: Approval of Personnel Staff Changes; Item B: Approval of Monthly Treasurers Report; Item C: Approval of Monthly Financial Report; and D: Call for Beds Roofing Project, Lincoln Elementary School. I'm looking for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda. That's read.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Natalie and a second by Scott. Les, do you want to try to call Roll?
You will. All right, I'm, the output is good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well.
Uh, Scott and Grayson?
Yeah.
Les Green is yes. Zach Roehl?
Yes.
Natalie Reinsland?
Yes.
Al Dalgren?
Yes.
Honesty, Superior, and Church.
Yes.
Shannon Hogg?
Yes. Can you guys hear Les any different?
Gary, Gary Ganz is on the way, Chair Hoss.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Right now, it says that Dr. Green's mic is muted.
Oh, maybe turn your mic on.
Never mind.
Gary, we got it. That was a high technical problem there.
Oh, the Roseanne Roanada.
Okay, next up, Board of Education Standing Committee Reports. Um, I don't have a list. Al, do you have a? Natalie?
Ma'am, thank you.
Zach?
I just sent out a legislative platform from AMSD for people to review. No, no action yet, and we will, I'll get back everybody on next steps for Legislative Committee.
Thank you, Zach. Scott, do you have a report?
No committee.
Oh, that's right. Yes. Monica?
So, I have a short report. We just, for the Governance and Policy Committee, we met, and we discussed some policies that are coming to our meeting. So, I won't, won't expand on that.
Thank you. And Les, do you have a committee report?
Yes, I do. I'll have to find it. The Personnel and Negotiations Committee met today, and we went over pandemic emergency paid sick leave concept and the 10 Days for Employee Federal Legislation for COVID-related Guarantee, and extended that to March 1st. And our discussion, and points centered around the fact that we were going to try to do what was in the best interest of our employee. So, whatever, however this works out, that's the direction we're thinking we want to go, that whatever's in their best interest. Staff vaccination process, over 1,200 staff have been vaccinated. Providers are state, our state pilot program, Stearns County Public Health, Incentric Care, included district partners in our vaccination efforts. That would be Summit, the Boys and Girls Club, and, and a couple of other sites. I can't remember what they were. Continued to schedule appointments in February based on staff needs. Assistant Superintendent searches are on and moving well. Also, discussed administrative hiring plan for 2021. Reviewed the annual staffing timeline and process for, and there's an attachment for that, but I think everybody understands that at some point, we have to do non-renewals and those kinds of things, which will be Scott's first participation in that. It's not one of the good things we do, but that will be coming up. Also reviewed the draft, the 21/22 calendar, or 21/22 calendar. Feedback to the staff about that. And, I hope that's not me. And, I think it is me. And, and then sent it back to the committee for some, after providing feedback, it went back to the calendar committee, and they're going to look at it and see how they can adjust it if they need to. All right, that's my report. Thank you, Tracy.
We're getting a lot of feedback, so I just wanted to comment that our next board meeting is going to be held at Quarry View, and then we'll be returning here for the following meeting. And I hear that we possibly will not have to use headsets by then, which, looking forward to it because this feedback is getting old. So, that can adjourns our regular board meeting at 6:42 PM, and we will open up the Board of Education Work Session. First up is Student Services Update, and this is going to be presented by Shannon Averson and Jack Peterson. Welcome.
Thank you, Board Chair Hoss and members of the board. We're excited to be here tonight, and Superintendent Jett, and of course Cabinet members excited to be here. I think Ryan is pulling up the presentation and will be presenting for us. I'm Shannon Averson, and I am the Student, Director of Student Services. I'll let Jack introduce himself.
Hi, I'm Jack Peterson. I'm SEL Supervisor, as well as Special Education Supervisor for Distance Learning Academy Elementary.
All right, next slide. This is our Student Services Overview, just a few areas that Jack and I work most closely with. And don't worry, we're not going to highlight every one of these tonight, but just going to touch on some of the most important projects that we've been working on over the course of this last school year. All right. Of course, I wanted to begin this evening. I get the pleasure of working with our nurses in District 742, and as you can imagine, it's been quite a year for our nurses, both our LPNs and LSNs district-wide. Last spring, as COVID hit us, we were impacted by obviously tracing protocols and screening, and our team really stepped up and was super flexible in being willing to go to other buildings that they weren't usually assigned to. They switched their shifts if needed, and even when students weren't in session, our nurses sometimes had to come in as early as 6 o'clock and shift their schedules around so that they could provide screenings for essential staff, food service staff, et cetera, who needed to be in the buildings and doing really important work. As we came into fall, as you can imagine, all of our buildings, we have our regular back-to-school pieces from medication pickup and delivery and, and the immunization compliance, as well as individual health plans for all students who have a medical need that requires a health plan. But in addition to all their regular roles, our nurses took on obviously that COVID tracing piece, supporting the opening of all the care rooms across the district. Some of the biggest pieces have been the changing with the MDH Decision Tree and COVID Response Protocols, and they've just gone right with it and stayed up to date on those pieces. And one of the biggest things that I see has really been the amount of communication, both parental and internal communications that have been, had to take place this year. And as you can imagine, we, we have parents and families that, you know, want their kiddos to be at school, and, and so our nurses have really stepped up and then done an amazing job. And just as a reminder, we have nine LSNs, nine licensed school nurses who oversee over 19 in-district programs in schools and 15 non-public sites. And then in addition to that, we have 16 LPNs. They're staffed one per major building in our district and then one over at Cathedral. So, we actually had 17 LPNs and nine LSNs who have been doing this incredible amount of work. I'm just going to touch real lightly on COVID attendance. Jack and I don't typically work with attendance or truancy, but this year, we did with COVID. And so, we developed a 15-day drop plan. That was a district-wide plan, and that was needed because we are required by MDE to do those 15-day drops so that we're not getting funding for students who aren't attending here. But as you can imagine, the governor wanted us to be more flexible in what we counted for attendance. So, we really had to develop a plan around that, and we required a home visit prior to dropping any student and informing our Assistant Superintendents. In addition to that, we looked at things like COVID and long-term attendance and what's going to be counted as excused or unexcused and how long, and so we had to really kind of solidify that. Go ahead and slide to the next one, Ryan. Other pieces, what was new to us? We had virtual classrooms, right? And how do you take attendance in virtual classrooms? And we had a shift to longer periods. And so, this team, we took quite a bit of time to really kind of look at what, what we needed for expectations for students and staff to feel like we could be successful, but then also allow for that flexibility for, for students as well. And so, that was a big piece. And then, one of the things I'm really excited about is that last piece there, the Attendance Triage Team with Stearns County. We have formed a new partnership or a collaboration that really has worked for looking at students and families across schools who seem to have students struggling in multiple buildings and working with Stearns to be more preact, or proactive rather than punitive, and trying to support resources and additional things that families may need to, to help get their students at school. Next slide. I've talked about multi-tiered systems of supports, but that, we have a district-level team where we support the building-level teams by doing a monthly meeting. One of the things that we did right away in spring of last year, as soon as we went into distance learning, we developed a distance intervention guide so that we could help teams establish what interventions could still continue while students were at home. And obviously, we had things we couldn't do for interventions that we could take place at home, but we did establish the things that were, were possible. We also, as a district, had to redo every single 504 plan before coming back into school this last, or this fall, and our counselors oversee 504s. And we had to create both a plan for students for in-school accommodations, in-person accommodations, and for a plan for accommodations while they were at home. So, that took place before the first day of school started, and we have over 200 and some students on, on 504s right now. Child Find, what that really is, is it's part of the MTSS process where we're really required to help find students or identify students who may have a disability and to make sure that parents understand what we can do to accommodate them. And then lastly, we do, we do as a district require the flagging of students, and what I mean by that is, we want to make sure that we're supporting teachers by understanding which students are currently in either an academic or a behavior intervention and which interventions they're in. So, that obviously is a useful point of data for any teachers or staff that are working with a student. Next slide.
All right, Positive Behavior Intervention Support. So, we are once again a PBIS exemplar school district, so we are proud about that. Our district PBIS team has been in collaboration with our multi-tiered system of support district team, as well as our social-emotional learning team. This year, we've really focused on the school-wide expectations, reviewing those to include that COVID safety. Obviously, that was huge for us this year. And then, we were still able to do our tiered fidelity inventories in our building walkthroughs. So, to be an exemplar district, you have to go through, so let's say I worked at Tech. I might go over to Apollo and interview staff and students and make sure they know their school-wide expectations, and I might ask if they've given out or if students have earned their positive behavior slips or bucks, whatever they want to call them. We also spent a lot of time focusing in on virtual school-wide celebrations because with school like this on a screen, you know, how do you celebrate successes? As well as virtual school-wide expectations, you know, as we don't like our cameras muted and we like to be present on screen. Let me go to the next slide, Ryan. Here's an example of South when they did a little Academic Achievers and Student of the Month presentation. So, you can see staff and parents and students attended that. You can see Shannon's little face up there in the top left, and there's the kids that made Academic Achievers. And then you can see Joel in the bottom there, and he is Joel Heitkamp. He's applauding the kids and talking to them. So, that's kind of what that would look like. Next slide. And then, our team, you know, as we talked about redoing the school-wide matrices, you know, a lot of schools, if you've been in them, they have those posters already done. They're laminated, they're scattered all over the school and in all the settings. So, as a district PBIS team, we really talked about how could we streamline this? And Nick Ferguson, PBIS coach at Apollo, made this, a poster similar to this for Apollo, and we kind of sweet-talked him to giving us that platform and letting us adjust it to kind of fit district-wide. So, you'll see this poster throughout in classrooms, kind of right next to those matrices, just to really remind people about COVID school-wide expectations. Social-emotional learning obviously is a huge push, and we've been working really hard and getting that out and lessons into teachers' hands and just being there to collaborate and support them. We've shown you guys this in the past. This is the wheel from Castle, and in the center are those five benchmark areas that the Minnesota Department of Ed has adopted for social-emotional learning competencies. So, you'll see the self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness. They've updated it this year. Those rings around the outside, where you'll see it says Classroom, Schools, Families, and Communities. On the bottom, they updated the verbiage, really talking about how like for schools, it's really a school-wide culture, practices, and policies, families and caregivers, that authentic partnership. So, it's nice to have that, those words there too. Along with social-emotional learning and supports, we've really been using conscious discipline, and that's really been our framework, not lessons per se, but it's been our mind shift for our staff and really being conscious is how we go about misbehaviors and things and using those as teaching moments. Elementarys are in their sixth year of implementation using, using conscious discipline, and our secondary levels have been given a little bit of intro training, talking about how relationship focus is important, even the brain states. And we're really working hard, Shannon and I, to get K's Astro back with us here this spring for some virtual training or possible in-person training with our staff. Still on the same line with social-emotional supports, we talked to you guys last year about piloting the Social Skills Improvement Scale, and that was a screener that we can choose to use for students that are in the multi-tiered system of support process at their sites. So, each site has about 65 assessments they can utilize. And these results that we get on the screener really would help for intervention planning, seeing what students might need, some small group instruction around school-wide expectations or where they might be lagging skills. So, an example here on the bottom is every, all those five areas you saw in the wheel, you get a printout that talks about how the student is doing. So, it will give you an example as far as, you know, they're unable to assess their strengths and weaknesses. So, they might need a lesson on learning on what their strengths and weaknesses are. And then this year, we're piloting the curriculum that goes along with this. So, when you print out the report, it'll actually tell you which lesson you need to teach. So, it's very easy and ready to pick up and go for our staff that are utilizing the program. Check-in/Check-out is an intervention that we use, a Tier 2 intervention that sites use. Typically, if we were in person, a student would carry their point sheet around from class to class or whatever setting they're in, and they would get different points awarded and really making sure they're following their school-wide expectations. We have all of our BRS staff, our Behavior Resource Specialists, our deans, counselors, BSS, Behavior Support Staff, EOCs, everyone's been trained on how to utilize this program. And really during COVID and distance learning, they've been using this program again to really monitor and support student engagement. So, checking in with kiddos, seeing have you logged in? Have you done your homework? Do you know who to contact? So, really having that morning check-in and that afternoon check-in for our kids. So, really what we're trying to get going now in their little social-emotional learning committee and district team, we're working on an SEL website, so we're hoping to have some stuff this spring put up on the district webpage. We're really trying to familiarize staff with those SEL benchmarks, sorry. We also are researching additional interventions that are great for kids, and we are seeing some success with. Also now, returning in person, we really want to still support staff with that check-in/check-out system. So, those that were used to having it online, we want to be there to support them and get them back to an in-person model of check-in/check-out. And same thing with the Social Skills Improvement Scale and those skills lessons. We obviously want to support them and help them utilize that as we're going back in person. We're still proud of our student support rooms. Every site has one of those, and they're staffed with either a Behavior Resource Specialist, at least one of them, and a possible Behavior Support Specialist, BSS. And those spaces are really utilized for proactive planned breaks. Sometimes, some reactive breaks might have to happen there when we have a dysregulated student. Those spaces are really utilized for that skill-building and teaching them self-calming skills. During distance learning, the BRS and BSF staff have really been supporting students virtually with virtual brain breaks and going to our virtual calming rooms and just talking with kids when they're needing that time to connect with an adult. And then, obviously, these staff members are working, you know, hard now, getting everyone transitioned back to in-person, making sure needs are being met and students are feeling welcomed and cared for again.
And referring to those authentic partnerships that, that was on that Castle Wheel, we have some really cool authentic partnerships we want to share with you, and one of them is our, our partnership with Greater Minnesota Family Services. We have Greater Minnesota Family Services available in 13 buildings district-wide. 15 staff support those 13 buildings, and that allows for therapy and skill-building at school for students while they're at school. But Greater Minnesota also offers family in-home services if, if a family would prefer to do that or want to participate in that as well. Some data here for you, we had over 542 students that were served through Greater Minnesota during that, from last January to this December. And then, they do continue those services throughout the summer. And then, about 240 of those were elementary and about 150 each in our middle schools and high schools. So, lots of great work going on there, and we're really grateful for that partnership. We do also, I want to highlight too, the buildings that we don't have Greater Minnesota in. We have another group called Dirt Group, a therapy group in there as well that I think is going to be highlighted at a later date. Thanks, Ryan. Another partnership we have is with Cry, and that's the Child Response Initiative. That's a collaboration with Central Minnesota Mental Health and then also the Saint Cloud Police Department. And really what they're doing is anytime that they have an event where they have children present, when the police are getting called to, to the home and there's a traumatic event, they're inviting their mental health worker, Paige McConkey. And he is early intervening with the families to offer support, anything from trauma assessments and service coordination for families if they're willing to participate. Our data is down obviously from last year when I presented because we, in April, we were in COVID, and from April to this year, it was a summer as well. So, we only had three referrals directly from our district. So, our administrators and staff are aware and can refer directly if they're aware of an event. But then, we still had 146 student, of our student referrals that went through law enforcement. In previous years, I think we had almost 100 last year from our district directly to Paige McConkey and Cry. And I think we had up like night 390 or 400 of our students that were referred directly through law enforcement. So, great to get those family resources. Child Advocacy Center, another great community partnership. Just as you can see, on January 29th, so last Friday, we welcomed them at the DAO, and they were able to train all eight elementary counselors. Actually, we had, I think, 10 or 11 people, we had a couple extras there. And they were training our counselors on what's called Safe and Strong. It's a prevention curriculum to reduce children's risk of sexual victimization. It is obviously age-appropriate lessons for K through 5. And then, there's also an adult training component that goes for staff ahead of time in case we have students who report after receiving the lessons. There's also a parent component, parent information sessions available, and they had piloted in about three of our schools a couple of years ago, and then they were going to again last, last spring, but because of COVID, we didn't have a chance. And so, now we're excited because having the counselors have that training means that they'll be able to deliver those really important lessons to the students at their sites. Next slide. Chemical Health Counselors, all right. I think you had a chance if you were on. I think you had a chance, if you were on the board last year, we had some of our chemical health counselors come in and participate. Delaney Wire serves Tech High School and South Junior High. Tanya Klug is at Apollo and North. And you can see there, it's a really wide range of referrals. They can get anywhere from 15 to 70 referrals in a school year. Those referrals could come directly from parents, from students, from our MTSS teams or admin. What they're doing is they're providing both an opportunity for individual and group counseling. And in fact, they did extend some group counseling over the summer, just this last summer. They do both preventative curriculum. And then they also work in that response for students with intervention lessons around chemical health. And then another piece that they do that's been really important and effective is providing parent nights and obviously resources. And lastly, they have provided quite a bit of professional development around, around the district. Actually, one of our chemical health counselors, Delaney Wire, got trained in Firefly International Training for Yoga last year. And she now offers a yoga session. She now offers a yoga session at South and Tech After School for all students. She said she's loving that students are participating. And then she had recently had a student who told her, I've never been able to get to a calm space, but now I can because of the tools I've learned with you. So she was excited to share that.
We also want to highlight for calming relaxation, our virtual calming rooms. They're put up on our website and we've got an elementary one as well as a secondary one. There they are. Tonight, we want to highlight the second, first thank the district staff that helped put this together. And highlight on the secondary side, so you can kind of see what it looks like. Thank you, Ryan, for driving the boat here. You'll see the secondary logos and as we scroll through, there's lots of options for things for students to use for calming. So there's the mindfulness, music sounds, some of that visual stuff. You can see those kids ready to move and groove and do some dancing. There's also a section for COVID if kids have some questions or concerns. But on the bottom here, there's a bar where it says request an appointment with a counselor or support staff. So our secondary students are able to click on that and then submit a request that they need to talk to someone for some support. So we're really excited about that. And Shannon and I have not been able quite yet to find out how many kids have utilized that. But what a great option for them with this virtual learning and time to connect with someone. Thanks, Ryan. We can go back.
Alright, and we can move on. There we go. I want to talk a little bit about our school counselors and they certainly haven't had a slow, any slowing down this year. They help us with master schedules and student schedules. They're busy with registration at this time. In addition to, of course, all the individual and different group counseling that they do. We do have several counselors who provide skills groups for a variety of reasons. Supporting college and career planning at the high school. SEL lessons and support specifically at our elementary sites. We have a lot of elementary counselors doing SEL lessons. As I mentioned before, they are the coordinators for those 504 plans across the district. They also do a lot of connecting our families to resources and a lot of these community resources that I've talked about tonight. And then another thing is every time we get a new student, I know it's those counselors who are greeting our families and, and those students and doing those pieces. As well as state testing report, support. You got a chance to meet some of our triage team last year and asked them a number of questions, which was outstanding. We had referrals include different things like questionnaires and collaboration and meetings. So they're getting referrals to really kind of connect families and students to resources in a much more timely manner. So it's, this is really unique to our district to have these three, you know, licensed family therapists available. Allison and Shereen work with our elementaries and secondaries and Londa works really closely with our early childhood. And they have been in our district for quite some time and really get to know our families and, and they're a wonderful resource. As you can see, 18, 19 was a normal year for us. We had upwards of almost 300 referrals to that team. And then in 1920, of course, we had, we went into trimester three with COVID and we saw the referrals dip down there. And unfortunately, obviously during COVID, we're not seeing the kiddos and families as much. So we've only had 55 referrals to date. We do expect that to increase pretty dramatically this third trimester. We can go on to the next one. I can tell you though, that that team has not slowed down. They are really working hard and we met again today and part of the things that we are doing are around suicide awareness and prevention. Professional development, they have created a lot of our district professional developments around mental health and specifically the suicide awareness piece. That's been reviewed with all staff over the last couple of years. Another piece that we are doing is Erica's Lighthouse. We have done that now. It is a suicide prevention curriculum for high school students. And we have done that so far at Tech in this last fall in the health classes. We also provided it at McKinley through their Focus Classroom. And it is, they're doing the planning right now to make sure it happens at Apollo this third trimester in health classes as well. And that team really has really led that work. Erica's Lighthouse also has a middle school curriculum that is very good. And so our next steps would be to move that into the middle schools for next school year. And then we need to do some more family outreach about not only communication for suicide awareness, but both the prevention and the postvention pieces, we know is another area that we, we will be working on over the next year. Then we have the team and I developed a really kind of brief mental health plan at the beginning of the school year. And we rolled it out to all of our secondary sites around kind of the must-dos for professional development and then some recommendations for those teams. And so we had everything from suicide awareness, mental health, chemical health, vicarious trauma. We recently had Dr. Luce come in and present again from CMA MHC. And he provided on vicarious trauma and we had about 45 staff coming on or I should say virtually participate voluntarily and virtually on a Friday. So that was well received. We also did mental wellness lessons for all secondary students this fall. And that was in a partnership with Kelly Brevig, who is a suicide prevention coordinator out of Amijee. And we had two 20-minute lessons for students around mental wellness and wellbeing. And then we also provided exit cards. And what that was, was an opportunity for students to let us know right away if they needed to meet with someone as soon as possible and who they wanted to speak to. And we really saw anywhere from like 50 to 100 or more exit cards per secondary school. And that staff was ready to roll and connect with those students within, within that day or the next day. The last piece on here is Prepare Training and we, Gary Ganji and I actually just attended a a meeting the other day about Prepare. And really what that is, it's looking at our school climate and looking at crisis prevention and resources around how we respond not only to crisis, but how we prevent crisis and then our postvention pieces with those as well. And so really what the Prepare Training does, it's going to provide a framework for us to see what we could improve upon and what we've already got in place. We were just awarded the Minnesota Champion School for Suicide Prevention Recognition from Minnesota Department of Health. They partnered with Cognito. And the reason we received this is we're one of three schools so far in the, in the state. And the reason we received this is because we made that suicide prevention training priority. We have had over 215 staff, a number of those are non-licensed staff, take the suicide, the suicide module training. And what this is, is they would go into online training and they would select elementary, middle school or high school. And whatever they selected, they would be have a simulation conversation with a student who's really going through some difficult times or having some challenges. And so we got a lot of great feedback from staff. They said it was really a useful tool. And then what we had to do in order to be recognized as a champion school is we had to have a follow-up, which resulted in a survey to staff and a reminder of who they needed to go to in their buildings and what they should do in the event that they have a student who's struggling. And so those were the pieces of how we, we got to be a champion school. And we have a mental health resource video. This is another project. I said that triage team didn't slow down. We were still busy. And so we worked on a mental health resource video. And the reason we chose to do a video is we wanted to make sure that parents could click on something, students could click on something and see what we had available in our district in one spot. And so I think Ryan is going to play just a minute clip for you. We don't want to play all 26 minutes, but I think he's going to play a minute clip here.
Hi, this is Shereen Anderson. I am triage therapist for St. Cloud Schools. And we are going to go over the mental health resources that District 742 has within our district and some mental health resources that are available in our community. But first, let's talk about what mental health is. Mental health includes our emotional, psychological and social wellbeing and it affects how we think, act and feel. So that determines how we handle stress, how we relate to others and the choices that we're making. Everyone has mental health from the time we're born until we die. And many things impact that, including biological factors, life experiences and family history of mental health problems. So just quickly, some early warning signs that maybe you might be seeing within your family or your student's life are maybe changes in their eating or sleeping, maybe they're eating or sleeping.
Thanks, Ryan. The other pieces to this video, one, the first piece is just an intro and it's just a quick into what mental health is and kind of sharing that we're all in various stages of our mental health and wellbeing at any given point. But then it goes in quickly to go into district resources and it includes a lot of the things that I've talked about tonight, including Cry, Greater Minnesota, counseling, chem health. And just, they did like one minute, quick oversight or overview of what we can provide as a district to families. And then last in community resources, a most of those commuters and agents and invited and all. And then they would send back the same thing, a minute clip. And so partners like Crisis Response and Boys and Girls Clubs, et cetera. So the video ends up being about 26 minutes long, but what we also provided is an outline of where staff or students can direct or just to learn about, or just to go to the part of the video that they just want to, to see at that time. So there's also an outline that goes along video. Second is nine through 12 this spring. It's also being translated, I'm being told, into Somali and Spanish. And then once we have those translated versions, we would roll those out to our parents via newsletters and on our website as well. So really excited about all of the community partners and internal folks that we work with who participated in that. Alright. That, and that's just, it's showing you the video topics there and that how it's laid out. So a family could look in there and if they wanted to learn more just about Greater Minnesota, they'd know where to go right to in the video so that they wouldn't have to go through the entire piece. So, thanks, Ryan.
Shannon?
Alright.
Just so that you guys, Shannon, as you were presenting or as you were speaking, there were times where you faded in and out. So if somebody's, if somebody has a question in the future, just know that at times you're cutting in and out. And as you see
Okay, sounds good. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
And I can't hear you without, Shannon, are you, are you guys ready for questions?
Yes, we are.
Okay. We're all in the same room. This is fantastic. I can look at everybody at the same time. Anybody first up? Al, go ahead.
Got to unmute there. I have a couple of questions. First of all, Shannon, you said something early on that kind of piqued my attention and that was that we have a school nurse in every school and Cathedral. And I'm wondering, is that a pass-through deal? Like that, that person works for District 742 but is permanently stationed at Cathedral and those funds pass through our district? Or how does that, how does that relationship work?
Um, we are, can, can everybody hear me okay? Yeah, okay. In our district, we have to allocate, and Amy can probably speak to it much more articulately than I can. So if Amy wants to dive in here or certainly Carol Potter. But we do provide services both through Title One programming to our non-publics. We also provide services to our non-publics for nursing and counseling. And so yes, we do have a 742 staff, LPN, who is, who is placed at Cathedral. And I can let Amy speak to that as well.
Yeah, for the, for the non-public, both guidance and nursing services, we receive a specific non-public pupil aids. It's, it's actually flows through the Community Education Fund. But we, it's, it's set in statute. There's a per pupil funding amount that's set for each of those. And so the non-publics report their counts and that determines our allocation. And then we're only obligated to provide them up, the level of service up to the funds that they generate. So if at some point that per pupil amount were to decrease or their enrollment were to decrease and they weren't generating enough funds to support that 1.0 position, we would then reduce that. We calculate that each year as part of the budget.
It, it is a District 742 position though?
Yes, and the state actually requires that. It has to be staffed by, directly by our employees. We've actually had non-publics in the past ask if they can provide the staff and we can just send them the money, like have it flow through and we can reimburse them. And the state has adamantly said no. The statute has written that we have to provide the service using our staff.
Who do they report to then? Because, and the reason I ask this is we're coming through a period where we went through COVID. Our schools were all closed, yet the Catholic schools were all open. And our nursing staff, the people who worked for us in our buildings were directed to carry out their job functions in a very specific manner. And we had rules in place that we were, anyone who entered a building was doing this. We had certain mask rules. We had certain sanitation rules in place. And yet we have an employee, according to this, in a building that is not a 742 building and they're reporting to some other entity. Yet we're paying them and they're an employee of ours and I don't quite understand how that works.
Can I jump in in one second, Al?
Yep.
So the concern that you just expressed, Tracy is on the line. And so I know exactly what you're saying verbatim. Tracy had to deal with that. Tracy and Carol, Tracy?
Sure, yes. And we worked with all the schools. At the start of the school year, if they were in a different learning model than us, we worked, for instance, with some of our Title One teachers to make sure that they could provide a separated space where they could maintain the same conditions that we were requiring for our staff. And so in some of those positions, it was about the staffing. In the nurse's office, we worked with Cathedral specifically to make sure that they understood the conditions that we needed to provide for our staff and had their cooperation and collaboration and making sure that they could assure that. Now, they, they may have had different conditions out in their hallways and in some of their classrooms. But in the spaces where our staff were assigned, we partnered with them to make sure that our staff had safe conditions.
And Tracy, in the manner that you are saying we partnered with, I believe there, what Al is maybe referring to is if there was a moment that somebody was not adhering to this agreement, what steps either did we take or were we ready to take?
Yeah, we, we made clear what conditions our staff needed and that we would have to remove our staff if they couldn't meet those conditions so that we could take care of our staff safety issues. And then they partnered with us.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I was asking really, but I was also saying that they have a different, the school, Cathedral had its own rules.
Got it.
And they had their own procedures and our nurse would have had to been adhering to and, and teaching their rules, not our rules, yet their own not our rules, yet they're our employee on our payroll, doing a different job. It just doesn't, doesn't square with me, but
Al, I think I can answer that.
Yeah.
Al, I think I can speak to that a little bit. And so we did have a situation in which our nurse that is placed there was asked to do things that we wouldn't typically do in our public schools. And so I met with the principal there and explained why we were doing what we were doing and how we expected, what, what protocols and procedures we expected, were expected to follow. And then it was made more clear why we needed to do what we were doing. She was very receptive and it went very well. And from that point on, we hadn't had any concerns about how they were dealing with contact tracing or the safety of our staff that were there.
Okay, well, I'll drop it. It just doesn't quite square up with me. It probably never will. Second, second question that I have is down a totally different path. I, this last week, I actually had some conversations with Dr. Putnam on this. But I was asked some questions and I'm going to ask for some, I'm going to ask some here just to get some further clarification or maybe some further information or opinions. But this, this, the Minnesota Student Survey was recently released. And in the Minnesota Student Survey, which would be the 2019 survey, they asked some additional questions and one of them was a question on students, the the, the answers that came out of it said that we have up to 5,000 high school students in the state that have traded sex for something of value. And it's a new question and it's a new perspective. And I'm wondering, and I'm kind of wondering what we have done in our district. What, how is this going to affect what we do in our district? And what types of programs do we need within our schools to help identify students? And it isn't just the trading for something of value. It's, it's students who may have experienced trauma of some type. And programs in, and especially in the high school students. I, Laurie and I talked quite a bit about the Child Advocacy Center. And I can't stand talking muffled through that thing. Talked quite a bit about the Child Advocacy Center and the programs that we have with that. And some of that sounds as though it's new and we, it sounds as though we have some additional training coming up this spring that's going to be with parent groups to help identify. And I think that's so important that we identify, be able to identify students who have or are experiencing trauma. And, but it also needs to carry on up into the high school levels. And it sounded to me like our programs in high school are at sixth grade and ninth grade. Is that correct? Or I, I think those two levels or is it ninth and
Six and nine.
Ten, what's that?
Six and nine, you got it right.
Yeah, six and nine. But do we need additional supports or do we need something additional to help carry that program forward and help to identify these kids that are experiencing trauma in their lives and unneeded trauma? And how can we identify more of these kids and get them the help that they need?
I can speak to that from what we're doing so far, Al. And that is, it's really that CAC piece that you identified. And we did start that about three years ago. We had them at three elementary schools. And then, and was planned to be in last year. But now it will have to be implemented in, in this trimester because of COVID. But that will be a district-wide initiative. And we are making sure that it goes into every single elementary school that we have. Also, and it didn't, and that is really around that making sure that we're identifying and supporting students who are at risk of victimization, sexual victimization. So there's those pieces. Outside of that, there are some curriculums that are available to, for us that we're starting to research. Like I think there's one called Not a Number right now that we're taking a look at. So there are things that are available that we can implement in addition to the other mental health kind of lessons and wellness lessons. We do have some skills groups. Typically, in the past few years, we've, we've partnered with some outside agencies to do some different type of skills and healthy relationships. And some of those pieces where that's tied in through groups like Anna Marie's. And there's been some groups with, I'm trying to think, Through Equity. I know Ellen has quite a few different leadership and groups going on as well. In the mental health resource video that I shared with you today, it also highlights some of those specific agencies that can support students who are struggling in, in those areas. Or so further identifying, identifying some partnerships in our community that can really help us with that. And I know our triage staff has been connecting with Sexual Minnesota or the Minnesota Sexual Assault Center. We got all kinds of acronyms. And they are willing to partner and come in and, and, and do some training with our, both our mental health staff. But also I think we could look at some of these curriculums that are available. And when I say curriculums, they're, they're more or less like two to three lessons. And I think maybe Lord, Dr. Putnam shared with you that our SROs are making that available in the sixth and ninth grade. But definitely we could take a look at as a team. How can we beef up that district-wide mental health plan and get more of those lessons? Because it only takes, you know, hearing it a couple of times for some of our kiddos to really be able to reach out to the counselors or the chemical health staff or the, the staff that they know can support them. And then lastly, it's a lot because it's all interconnected. But lastly, I know Cry and the work with Paige McConkey has been really vital around that too. And we've had some administrators refer students to Paige who we are worried about that sexual exploitation piece and, and sex trafficking piece. So those conversations are definitely happening and, and connecting parents and students to some really good local resources right now. But there's, as you said, there's, there's so much more that we can continue to work on and do for sure.
Shannon, can I ask, is the focus, I mean, it seems to me like we have a lot more focus on elementary students than on secondary students or with, than with secondary students. Is that because we believe if we make self-awareness and awareness of this type of behavior, if we, if we teach that at the lower level, that they will carry that all the way through and be more likely to report when they're in high school? Or because it seems to me like when you get to the high school age, that's when you start to mix in the drugs and alcohol. And then it's the combination really creates the havoc.
That's a great question. I think it's a total transparency. The reason the focus was heavy with the CAC in the elementary is because they, CAC, we were partnering, I brought them into a mental health group where we had professional development. And then it was like the light bulb came on and we said, hey, it'd be great to have them come back in and do this with our counselors. So that was more opportunity driven than anything else. And, and it's just a really good curriculum. And, but yeah, you're right. When I was at South, I know we had our SRO there who did this work with our kiddos and, and would bring our, our classes in, you know, one group at a time and go through these pieces and all the things that you're talking about from, you know, don't put anything out there on your cell phone to, you know, the, the sex trafficking and, and the dangers of that. So it has been happening. I would say actually on the mental health end of things and the suicide awareness, we've really been more focused on the secondary, six through 12. And that's because it, it's, we're at a point where we virtually could reach out to kids and still have conversations about mental wellness and how, how to support them. So it's really kind of been a little bit about opportunity and knowing that we, we have more work we can certainly do on, on that end too.
Okay, thank you.
You good, Al? Thanks. Natalie?
Thank you, Chair Haas. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay, good. So I like, first of all, thank you for all the work you're doing for our children. This is heavy stuff and for you guys to deal with this every day and to still be the people you always are in front of us, which is, it's another day to help students and put a smile on your face, even though you deal with some really heavy stuff. It's just the modeling there is impressive and thanks for doing that. Shannon, when you said that we are proactive rather than punitive, that's everything for children. And I just really thank you for all things that you guys have and all your staff have put in for our kids. To know that you are consistently thinking about the whole child makes me sleep better at night. And the one, especially since I have three kids in the district and they each have such specific needs. And to think about the fact that we have thousands of kids, each with specific needs. I'm amazed you got through all the programs in the time you did. I didn't even explain them all. The one thing I wanted to learn a little bit more about, if you could give me the Cliff Notes version of what, what is entailed in the vicarious trauma training?
Well, Jack has done some training in the past and I can let him speak to that piece on what he has done with staff. But what we did in this vicarious piece with Dr. Lewis specifically was he's really talking to staff about the trauma that they have. And, and just what you said is the work that we do is heavy. And the groups that I'm working with, social workers, school psychologists, counselors, it's heavy. And when I was pulling those teams together last year, we would, we were allowed to do like a, a mental health PD, bring them in once a month. And we had about 80 people participating in those roles and our nurses. And, and it's been phenomenal, but of course COVID, we had to stop that. So this year we've done some things virtually. And that vicarious trauma was one of the things that we offered again, where Dr. Lewis really got into, we know that the work we do with our kids is really heavy. And how can we reduce our own stress so that we, and, and help our colleagues and each other? So that we can continue to be a hundred percent there for kids. And so that's the vicarious trauma piece. Jack, I'll let you speak to a little bit of the training that you've done as, as well.
Yeah, we really talk about, and thanks for your kind words, Natalie. Appreciate that. We talk about the ACES, you know, letting staff know about the ACES scores and also being trauma informed, you know, talking about that, meeting children where they are. And then we really try and push, you know, the term self-care. And I know that rubs people different ways, but just kind of making sure that they're taking care of themselves and reaching out when they need support, you know, and being honest with your team, you know, and just saying, hey, I had a situation in my childhood. I can't really talk to this student about that. Can someone else help me with this? You know, and just giving people that permission to really be transparent and to hone in on their strengths and not put themselves into situations where they're not going to be effective with a student.
That's real. Thank you, Jack, and thank you, Shannon. And lastly, I just want to say that Lauren, my sixth grader, came down the stairs one day during distance learning and she's like, you know who's super great is my counselor. She just checks on me all the time. And if I need to say something to her, I do, and I feel comfortable with her. You know, she just made the transition into sixth grade and was there for what, a month and a half? And then just taken out of the building until Tuesday. But to be able to have that connection when there's that transition and then where there's COVID and everything has meant everything to her. And she is a more competent student because of it. So thanks for, thanks for everything.
Thanks, Natalie. Zach?
No real questions, just super excited. Everything's moving along as well as it could be. And knowing what we have in place and being able to share that with, with parents and other people who are interested in our district is very nice. I'll put, I'll put it that way. So it's hard work and it, I feel like we're, we're a little ahead of the curve. And it's just, it's just good to know that. This is my job, it's who I live, ACES, all that stuff, right? So yeah, if you ever need help, community collaborations, I think we're also just lucky to have these entities right here in town, whether it's the Mental Health Center or other folks. So yeah, keep up the good work and be mindful of burnout and burn through. If you're not familiar with the second term, you probably already are, Jack, right? Thank you for, for doing this, this hard work. Constant moving targets too.
So Zach Scott?
Yeah. I have a few little questions. You mentioned under attendance drop, they have home visits for 15 days. If a child's, how does that work?
The home visit requirement was just simply that our staff, before we could drop a student, we wanted our, our buildings to attempt to go to the home and, and, and not go in the home, but knock on the door, say, where are you? Are you going to participate in school? And, and try to connect with the family so that we weren't just dropping a student. So we had a couple, all of our schools had a team that they had designated who were looking at these attendance pieces. And then they would go out with one or two people. And again, not in the home in any way, shape or form. But just because, as you know, not everybody's picking up the phone, not everybody's responding to emails. So that was our, they are our lastest effort to say, are you here? And get you back and engaged in school.
Okay, there is talk of a 504 plan. Is that the same as an IEP?
That's a great question. They are different in that an IEP, an Individualized Education Plan. And again, Carol, you can at least step in if I misspeak because I am the expert on IEPs. But essentially there's 13 different areas. And the assessment process for a student to qualify, they have to qualify in specific areas, in 13 areas. So like SLD or Severe Learning Disability or EBD, Emotional Behavior Disorder. So a specific disability. A 504 is also a legally binding document. But what it's doing is it's identifying students who have a disability, but they may not meet the criteria or the threshold to qualify for an Individualized Education Plan. Students on an IEP might need something outside of the classroom to support them in their learning. They might need a different type of curriculum. Whereas a student on a 504 might, we, we talk about it like it, they might need an accommodation just to level that playing field. And so they can access everything the same as their peers can, but they might just need something to kind of level that playing field for them. So we see a lot of 504s come about through maybe a student who has some mental health anxiety pieces or a student who has like a medical disability. And so we would make those accommodations and a 504 plan for that.
Now, you had mentioned modifying that plan for in-school and out-of-school. What sort of modifications is that involved?
The modifications or accommodations that we would provide for a student out of school could be something as simple as a different technology device. It could be more regular check-ins. It could be one-on-one check-ins with an adult throughout the day. It could be actually bringing the paper copies or mailing physical copies of something to their home. So they can, it's basically ensuring that access piece no matter what. And so, and it really depends on the student and the disability and, and what the team sees as the need. But that really, that, that accommodations at home did look very different from obviously what we have to provide sometimes in person.
Oh, you had mentioned child find, we got lost kids out there?
That's another great question that I know I kind of, or another great topic and I skimmed it really quickly. But essentially it's that piece of the 504s and the IEPs, right? And that whole MTSS process. Our schools work really hard and they have teams that include administrators, counselors, chem health counselors, teachers. And what they're doing is they're looking at students who are struggling and they're trying to do those interventions and trying to get them to, you know, skill build in those areas that they're struggling in, either academically or behaviorally. But we know that sometimes a student, no matter what kind of interventions you put in place, may not get there because they may have a disability where they need an accommodation or, or an Individualized Education Plan. So that's really that child find requirement. It is our responsibility to, throughout our district, to identify students who may need either one of those IEPs or 504s.
Okay. You mentioned partnering with Greater Minnesota Family Services. Do they provide their service for free or how does that work?
That is another great question. And then Carol, you certainly can pop in if you want to. But it's, we have a grant where we, we provide some money towards Greater Minnesota Services through our LCTS grant. But they are providing those and Greater Minnesota really is getting families to do those diagnosis. those diagnosis and then billing back to health insurance and some of those pieces. So it's kind of a dual partnership. We really don't pay a lot towards Greater Minnesota through our grant process. They're really doing that service through billing the insurance or in the cases, they do make the exceptions and do some things for families who may not have that insurance available. Carol, did I articulate that all right?
You did.
Yeah, we had one of our family members, it was, the initial approach was, hey, this is a grant, it's free, it's no problem. But the minute they got a hold of our insurance, away they went with all kinds of treatments. And it seemed like it was more of a moneymaker than anything else. For example, they would take a group of kids, oh, let's go shopping at the Crossroads Mall. And that was good for mental health. Well, maybe it is, I don't know. But we pulled that kid out of it.
Okay.
At one time, the district had a contract with Recovery Plus where they would bring counselors in. And is this still ongoing or do we have our own? And what's the association with Clara's House?
So I can talk about it, Shannon, if you want. And so Recovery Plus, what we have, our partnership with them is we have two teachers at Recovery Plus Residential Program. And so they're there all the time for the kids that are coming and going from that partial hospitalization. And then at Clara's House, Clara's House is a day treatment program, again, partial hospitalization, in which students can go there, it's mostly for med trials. And so they're there for anywhere from about two weeks to about six weeks, depending on what their needs are. And so they have, we partner with Centricare and they have their mental health staff and we have three teachers there and some non-licensed staff there to support as well. So the kids are going to school while they are doing these med trials so they can see and view and observe the students and how they're interacting within a school setting. But we're right on site with them there.
Okay, I sort of understand Clara's House. But at one time, the district was bringing Recovery Plus people out to the schools.
Well, at this time, we hire our own district-wide chemical health counselors. We don't use Recovery Plus to bring the chemical health counselors to the schools. We partner with the residential program only with Recovery Plus at this time.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's pretty good. Thank you. I'm done.
Thanks Scott. Monica?
Thank you Shannon, thank you Jack for everything that you're doing. That's great. I do have sort of questions. One question, the first question that came onto my head was when you were saying that how do you do, that you were trying to figure out, how do you do attendance in, in, in what, in, at home, I mean, in distance learning? And I was wondering, can you tell me how do you do attendance at distance learning?
I don't have the attendance policy memorized, but what we looked at was, because I didn't work on that team, but my understanding was it was looking at that 90-minute block or that period and identifying, we wanted students to be on-site or in class within that first 10-minute window. And so it was really important to teachers that we were trying to get students in class right away so that we could get through some lesson planning and take attendance and do some of those pieces. One of the things that we really went back and forth on was tardy versus truant. And if a student wasn't there in that first 10 minutes, can we still give them credit? Like, let's say they overslept, they didn't get there on time, something occurred, and can we still give them credit for being there if they log on later and participate? And so that was really the crux of that team's conversation and we landed on marking it tardy or if students came in and were able to show that they had done some work and maybe they showed up just a little bit late, we wouldn't mark them truant for that period. Does that answer that?
Yeah, so does, does that mean that your team had to be getting in and out consistently through the classes during the period of time?
That our attendance folks?
Yeah.
No, the teachers would record the attendance at the beginning of the period. And so our attendance folks, staff at the schools didn't have to go in and out of classes, it was our teachers.
Okay. The other thing that, Jack, you were saying, you actually stole my question. I was going to ask you, how many kids do you, have you have in the calming rooms? And you said that you don't have that data yet. How does that work? And also, how do you know if those rooms are working? So is it because we don't have, is because we're not here yet? Or, oh, but you were also talking about the virtual calming rooms?
Yep, so the virtual calming rooms were created, you know, some other districts had started them last spring. We partnered with Oseo and they gave us permission to utilize their virtual calming rooms. So, you know, when you're on-site, you've got places you can go and the staff you can go maybe quick play a game with, you know, when you're in school, there's those different support staff. And obviously, digital or distance learning, you don't really have that. So these websites were created for students to be able to go to and participate in those little activities. And with our support staff that work with students out of the support rooms, they're able to log on virtually like they are, we are now. And then the student can present their screen and you can say, you know, Ms. Monica, watch me draw this dog, you know? And as the student's drawing, they're talking, having conversation, you know, how's life? What do you need? That kind of stuff. So that's kind of how those virtual rooms were, are utilized. It gives them time to take a break, a brain break, pretty much.
So I'm wondering about the, so it is a brain break, but, but in distance learning, the brain, the part of the break is the screen break. So is that considered there? How is, or is that, is that not that important? Is that, am I going too much into this or?
No, I missed the word you said. What kind of break? You broke up.
Screen break. So being in front of a monitor.
You're right. You're exactly right. And I, and for students that are on those support plans, I know some of the staff talk to those parents directly and then their, that plan's in place where after a certain amount of time, that student then will take that movement break away from the screen. So they work that out with those plans in families. Good question.
So, but you don't know how many people have gone into those rooms. So how do you know if those work or are, how, what's, and I actually have some sort of questions about evaluation plans for, for some of those things that you said. So how do you evaluate if the things that you're putting in place work?
So as far as the virtual calming rooms, I know we've gotten feedback from students that say they use them. They are, when they're waiting for their class to start, they'll go and listen to music or watch the, in the secondary, there's the motivation videos. I know some students have utilized those. I don't know that we have a tracker on that site where we can track like how many kids have been there. I mean, Ryan might be able to tell me more about that if we've got something set up in that form of technology. As far as other evaluations we've done, for our student support rooms, all those students that use those on-site are on a student support room plan. So those are reviewed annually and those kids have to qualify to utilize those spaces through the MTSS team that Shannon was talking about or child find. So we determine students need to utilize that. And so we do keep that data and how many students are on plans.
Thank you. How did you evaluate Erica's Lighthouse pilot? And I, and I noticed that it's a pilot. So how do you, how are you evaluating that pilot and how long is the pilot? And then when it's not a pilot, what's, what's the next step?
Well, this is the first year, yes, in Tech McKinley and Apollo. We've really just been working closely with our triage folks and the health teachers at those sites. Evaluate, I guess I would say that it was research-based, free, and what we were really looking for was a program that we felt like our kids could relate to. So there's a video component to it. So going into it, we were really, we researched a lot of different opportunity or a lot of different programs. Evaluation of it, what we're really looking for is the feedback from our students. It's not large groups of students that it's being presented to, it's smaller groups. There's a lot of discussion components within that. And so really that's based on the feedback from our students. And unfortunately, because it's supposed to be in three different lessons, we really had to kind of uproot all of that because we had to do it quickly before students, we went into distance learning and we had to provide it in one day. So hard to do a really good evaluation tool on that because we had to modify it this year to get it done with our new schedules. I would say that moving into next year, we would really be looking at more specific feedback from our students and that staff at both sites. So, and we did question our SEL team, we have our SEL district team as well, and got feedback from those teams about who had it at their sites. And, and so most of that was more anecdotal feedback at this time.
Thank you. Also, I want to give you kudos for the translations that you're planning for. So I thought that that was some, some lessons that you're translating. So I would allow you to talk a little bit more about what is what you're translating? Is that, is that you're translating documents or is that, is part of a curriculum? So what am I expected to, what is the expectation with those translated things that I am a parent and I can read them? Or can you speak a little bit more about that?
Absolutely. So what's going on is that mental health resource video that we showed just the clip of, and it talked about the overall what mental health and wellness is, and then it jumps into the internal programs and resources and then the community. We don't typically do translations for videos that long, but I'm understanding that Ellen's team and Equity is taking that on and Tammy Deland is working with her as well. And the, the hope is to have video translated in both Somali and Spanish so that we can share that out with parents and they can follow along with those pieces and be aware of those resources as well.
That's wonderful. Is that translation coming with cert, with advice, with cultural advice about the way that you're supposed to, I mean, I'm, so when you're talking about translation, we typically talk about things in writing. So when, when you're talking about interpretation in a video, is, I mean, you're not doubling the video, right? So, but that's kind of what I, what I wonder also is that you have people that are, that are, that are mental health providers that work in those specific languages with cultural competencies that will tell you how to speak to that audience in those languages. So it's not only about the language.
In this case, and I can let Tammy, I think she had mentioned it's going to be a voiceover. And because we're not getting into the context, context of like mental health pieces specifically, it really is just, here's what triage is in District 742 and how they can, what, what resources they can help you provide. They were one-minute clips of here's resource, here's resource two, here's resource three. So this would be just a voiceover at this point to make sure that those resource, but there won't be an elaboration of, that's my understanding, that would make that, that would go into depth more than what's available through the resources in the English version, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense. I would be very interested in knowing if families that don't speak English go to those resources because now they have the video that tells them about the resources. I would be interested in knowing where the resource is effective, where the resource is useful. Did they find that those resources apply to them? And I'm really interested in that because there is a lot of issues, there are a lot of issues in, in, in families that English is not the first, not the first language around mental health.
I should note too, that at the very beginning of that video, we did start with our Spanish and Somali hotlines and the translated versions, even in the English version. So that even if they don't make it into, they don't find the translated version, then those, we started with that, the first video with both those hotlines so that they knew right away they had someone that they could call and they would connect them to resources as well.
Thank you Shannon. And my last question is actually for Zach. But you were saying Zach, that, that you were congratulating them and telling them that we are ahead of the curve and I'm not an expert. So I want to, I want to ask you, how do you know that we're ahead of the curve?
Just comparing the services we have to offer, the insight we have and how we deliver them compared to other districts throughout the state. And a part of that is because we have very localized resources that we are more easily able to partner with. That's, that's an asset we have being one district within this regional center. So this is brought up at AMSD meetings and other places where they are still looking to us. There are other districts that are still talking about starting PBIS or curriculums. They're starting to, just starting to integrate full-on social emotional learning curriculums. We're way beyond that. So that's how I know why I don't have statistics to provide you, but it's, the conversation is had on a regular basis outside of here.
Thank you Shannon. Anything else that you want, Carol, want to add to that?
Monica, I was just looking for my microphone, so I apologize for the delay. You know, simply to add to what Zach said, I think he's absolutely right. Because we are a regional center and we have great opportunities for partnership, that it's easy to reach out to them and they are looking to partner with us. And so it is, it's, it's easy, it's easy to do. And there's always more things that we can add that sometimes we have to say, oh, one thing at a time, or we can't have too many pilots going at the same time because we won't have great fidelity. But we, it's a wonderful, it's wonderful to be in St. Cloud and have all of these different pieces at our fingertips to support our kids.
Thank you.
Thanks Monica. Les?
It's not so much a question, but just a comment. Am I on? Okay. To the concept of, of the head of the curve, I think one of the things that we, we can't always rely on, on research because it's always after the fact. Sometimes facial expressions, anecdotal kinds of comments that we hear and, and the, the fact that people who have their ear and their, their passion involved in these kinds of activities, who talk with other people, as Zach mentioned, of this place or that place where they're not even thinking the way that he's thinking, that, that those are very important kinds of concepts for us to think about and understand. The reason I'm saying that is that 10 to 12, 15 years ago, school boards didn't talk about this stuff. We didn't, this was not, this unheard of. I mean, the thing that Al brought up, I mean, we didn't talk about those things. And, and then the caution is not to think we're so far out in front of the, ahead of the curve that we forget to scibust and forget to push this envelope. I didn't know 15 years ago that kids had these kind of problems. And, and we are, and they had the problems before we were able to respond to them. So, so the anticipatory concept is, is there a way for us to think in such a manner and provide staff with the ability to think in such a manner that they can anticipate the surprises that might be coming up in this mental health field so that we can not even be ahead of the curve, but get out in front of the problem? And so we can see it coming and head it off that way. So it's just a matter of how, how we might think about things is all I'm saying. Folks are doing a great job. I appreciate and I'm proud of this stuff, you know. And so, good.
Thanks Les. Jack and Shannon, thank you very much for your important work and your dedication to the community and sharing your talents and leaderships. If we have any other questions, could we reach out to you via email? Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. Goodnight. Next up, we have a gymnastics update presented tonight by Willie Jet Superintendent and Amy Scallierud, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services. Amy Scallier, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services.
Make sure that I'm unmuted. And I believe Ryan, if you, if you're going to steer or drive for us, please. As Ryan is setting that up, one of the things I wanted to mention, Shannon Avinson and Jack Peterson. And the supports that they provide are just, and you just witnessed it in the presentation. It's absolutely outstanding, but they do it not just for families and students and for staff, but that staff, that, things go all the way to us as administrators. And as a little side note and a little thank you to Jack, he, in terms of taking care of people, not just kids, but adults also. Some of you may have saw me snacking on something a little, a little while ago. And Jack knows that I am a, that I have a penchant for Chicago mix popcorn. And so he made sure that that was sitting at my desk one day. And it's been that I did not have dinner tonight. I just needed to look in my closet where Jack had taken care of me and that was my little snack. And I do not see, has Ryan kicked, oh, here we go. That was me just, you know, filling time, but actually it's not. Thank you, Ryan. All right. Good evening, Chair Haas and members of the board. As you know, a few years ago, the board charged me and the administration with finding a solution to housing the gymnastics program. And so tonight, I'm glad to provide you with an update. Next, Ryan. During the last two years, we have leased the St. Cloud School of Dance as a practice facility while hosting meets and competitions at the New Tech High School. Also during this time, we purchased new equipment that is stored at the New Tech and available for meets and competitions. This purchase eliminates the need for the team and parents to haul equipment between facilities. The St. Cloud School of Dance practice facility also has a full set of equipment that is always set up. Next slide, Ryan. At the present, with the St. Cloud School of Dance lease coming to an end, and this is something that Amy Scallier is going to discuss shortly, the Board Finance Committee asked me to partner with the coach, with Coach Haas, to discuss the current and future situation and ways to improve. And when I say Coach Joel Stark Haas. We all know that as a coach, the ultimate wish would be for a brand-new facility at Tech. And that's the dream for many, that's the dream for all. And we understand and acknowledge that. My questions for the coach were the following. Are you happy with the current situation? And what enhancements would you make at the practice facility, the St. Cloud School of Dance? And at the New Tech for the betterment of the program? Everybody needs to understand that it's not just the student athletes that he has that are participating at the secondary level, but he also has the program for the younger kids. The coach listed four things he'd like to see for his student athletes, and like I said, the overall program. These include transportation, to make sure student athletes can get to the practice facility from across the entire district. And as we know, our athletes come from all of our secondary schools. Second, a training room for athletic injury prevention and treatment, specifically an ice machine. Third, technology access, Wi-Fi, for instructional purposes and viewing capabilities. And last, space for bleachers and a changing facility locker room. I also asked the coach, is there anything additional needed at the New Tech? And Coach Stark Haas said, there was nothing needed and was pleased with the facility and new equipment that we had purchased. I want to reiterate that in my conversation with the coach, the head of the program, he has been, he has been happy and is happy and is grateful for the collaboration to arrive at this solution. And I just, for me to, you as the board, it's been nice to work in collaboration with Joel. And now Amy's going to talk about the financial and sustainability plans. Amy Scallier.
Thank you, Superintendent Jett. So when we started first talking about this, currently we're leasing, so we looked at our financial situation. And really leasing is financially the best option for the district. Continuing a lease arrangement outside of having upfront money, you know, purchase our facility, which we know we don't have money that would be required for, for that sort of investment. Leasing allows us to utilize our lease levy authority. We have some other leases that have recently dropped off and will be dropping off, where we have the ability right now in terms of timing to be able to expand the current lease and the lease amount and still have that be within our existing lease levy authority and not result in a tax increase. So as mentioned previously, we're currently leasing space with the St. Cloud School of Dance. The current lease was a seven-month lease, so it really was for the summer months for the youth programming and then the months that are, were in season for the varsity program. That lease expires at the end of February, the way that that initial lease was written. And so what we would be proposing is to enter into a 12-month lease for two reasons. Number one, it gives both the youth and the varsity programs, primarily the youth program, varsity has, you know, more restrictions in terms of off-season and when they can get together. But for purposes of the youth program, it would allow year-round access in programming that we don't currently have the luxury of doing. And then it would also provide additional rent coming into the property owner to be able to recover the investment in some of the necessary upgrades in terms of space and facilities that Superintendent Jett mentioned. So that's, that would be the first change with the lease is that it would switch from a seven-month lease to a 12-month lease. And then we'd really be looking at a long-term option. So we'd be looking at a 10-year lease with a possibility of having a renewal period thereafter. And so we're still negotiating and finalizing the details of that in terms of monthly lease amount, but we're very, we're very close to having that, that worked out. And then we also had talked, which the St. Cloud School of Dance is open to, if we're going to enter into a long-term lease to add some building signage so that along with their signage on the building, we have something identifying that this is the St. Cloud Gymnastics Practice Facility or, you know, however we would want that signage to read. And so that is something that we would be incorporating into the lease as well. So that is the proposal. And as I said, the lease, current lease expires at the end of the month. So the hope would be to finish negotiating the terms of the lease, finalize that and have Board Finance Committee review the lease next week at our Finance Committee meeting, and then bring that to the board for approval at the following board meeting.
Questions?
Monica? Les? Scott?
Ah, yes. I was wondering, this team has more than just our district as members. I believe we have Cathedral members also. What is the relationship between the district and non-district schools?
So if we're sticking strictly to gymnastics, because we, we, if you talk about all of our activities, we have co-ops with all of our activities, not all, but with many of our, our neighbors in terms of cooperating and providing access and opportunity for our student athletes or whoever. But if we're talking strictly gymnastics, and I'm going to get specific with Cathedral, I'm not part, or yes, I am. I do consider myself part of the gymnastics program because I am the superintendent. My response would be, if I'm paying attention to the coach, he and the program, they welcome all from within the greater St. Cloud community. And so I would tell you that that relationship is more than just good, I would say it's outstanding, I would say it's thumbs up. They take care of young people from kindergarten level all the way up to high school. So I would tell you that that relationship is very, very good.
Does that answer your question, Scott?
Yeah. Does Cathedral contribute to, to the team financially? Or is this something that the district pays for entirely?
Amy, go ahead.
So with all of our co-ops, we actually calculate and what the per-participant cost is for each of those activities that have participants from our non-public schools or other public schools, because we do have co-ops that exist with neighboring public school districts. So regardless of whether that's a public or a, or a private school, we, we do calculate that and we build that back, so based on the number of members of the team that attend each school. With this specific, we don't have a lot of our co-ops where there's a lease cost. With this particular co-op, because it's, it's a levy implication, we don't build back the levy portion because all of our taxpayers, which would include our Cathedral parents, are already paying their share through that lease levy. If that were to be a situation with a neighboring district, that's another public district, then typically each district would levy their own share of the facility rental and pass that through to their taxpayers. But right now, we don't have any of those instances.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Anything else?
Nope.
Les? Al?
Well, yeah, I have a question concerning community education and gymnastics. Is going to a 12-month lease, is that going to greatly expand our opportunities for community education and young, very young programs, like grade school age and things like getting more participation in the programs through those feeder programs?
And Al, that's part of the reason when Amy talked about going from the seven-month to the 12-month, it's not even just trying to stabilize the program, but you're trying to always grow it. And so, yes, by going 12 months, that gives more access, more time, more space to be able to grow the program for our younger students, our younger kids in the community to be able to utilize this program. So the answer is yes.
And do we have, this is just, I guess I just don't know, but do we have a boys' gymnastic program at all? Not at the high school level, I understand, but in community education, do we have a boys' gymnastics program? Is that something we would look at doing?
So Al, I have not witnessed a call-out of a boys' gymnastics program specifically, but I would probably venture to say that if there were young males that were interested in gymnastic, gymnastics, I believe Coach Stark Haas is someone in this community who just loves the sport. And, and so do I think that he would be willing to work with a young person, a young male? I believe that's true. I believe the answer is yes. But that is something you don't see, I've not witnessed, not just in our community, but in other places I've been, a boys' gymnastics program called out specifically.
Yeah, they have to have them somewhere because we have boys' gymnast, we have men's gymnastic in the Olympics. And we have it in college at the collegiate level. So some districts have to have it, have it somewhere, although I know it's not in Minnesota.
Correct.
And if that were to be a possibility that at a young level, we would offer through community education, a boys' gymnastics alternative or program? Then I would say that we should look at and maybe consider buying the pieces of equipment that you would need for a boys' program. And I think a lot of the girl, most of the stuff, most of the equipment we have can be used by both, but I'm thinking of things like the rings and...
Pommel horse.
Yeah, the pommel horse with handles, yep.
Yep.
So there are a couple of pieces that we may need to consider, if, if it would be something that we would look at, but I think it would be something that, I'm not, I'm not willing to say that there would be no interest in it, in it, in the community at all. I just, I can't go there. I think that it's been dissipated because there is no boys' high school program.
Correct.
I still think there may be at a, at a young level, some interest in it, so.
Okay.
And it may be a way to increase community education numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Al, I think right now it may be advertised, and Adam may know this, if it's advertised in community ed as boys' and girls' gymnastics classes. I don't know if he's out there, but at one time it was. I don't know what it says now.
Yeah, I'll look it up and get the information to you.
Thanks, Adam. Any other questions? Thank you for looking into this and finding solutions. And we look forward to it coming forward to us soon for proposing a new lease to sign.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is Item C, School Updates, Activities Updates, COVID Update, presented tonight by Dr. Marsha Bice, Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education, Dr. Lori Putnam, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education, and Willie Jett, Superintendent of District 742.
Good evening, Chair Haas, Superintendent Jett, members of the board and community members joining us this evening via live streaming. This evening, I have a variety of things to share with you, from distance learning to the return to in-person learning for elementary students and kindergarten enrollment update as we prepare for a new school year in the fall. Ryan, you can go. And today was a really great day as we welcomed back all elementary students to in-person learning. As I visited schools today, you could feel the excitement and energy. Staff and students alike are very happy to be back. These lovely students greeting us in this photo are fifth graders from Clearview Elementary. I have two short video clips here for you from early childhood, and we have early childhood students who have been busy learning how to read as well as name the letters in their name.
All right, go ahead, bud.
The house. The floor. The chairs. The beds. The bears. T, A, Y, L, I, E.
I love the enthusiasm in our early learners as they are learning letters, sounds, and learning how to read. You can go to the next slide. There's one, I think, Ryan, there might be one, there you go, thank you. Catherine Semisex kindergarten class has been working on reading, writing, and representing whole numbers from zero to at least 31. And these are DLA kindergarten students. Representations may include numerals, pictures, real objects, and picture graphs, spoken words, and manipulative such as connecting cubes. And so for example, students might be asked to represent the number of students who are eating hot lunch with tally marks. Another student on this slide is practicing printing ABCs and recognizing and naming upper and lowercase letters. What's unique about their learning this particular day is that they were able to bring a stuffed animal to class with them. You'll notice, however, that one of the students brought a whole litter of live puppies instead. Today, in Mr. Walker's kindergarten class, there was dancing and counting, both forward and backward, after returning from distance learning.
Four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty. Nine, ten, three, nine, eight, four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine.
One hundred.
One hundred.
Fifty, fifty, forty, twelve, eleven, ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one.
Let's see your hands.
Mr. Walker, in case you don't know, is a kindergarten teacher at Oak Hill. And they went all the way up to a hundred and back. So I didn't have you watch the whole thing, but very enthusiastic group of students nonetheless. The photos on this slide are Oak Hill first grade students working on geometric shapes. On the top left, you see them at the start of their project. And to the right, you see the finished product. Along with that, in the photo on the bottom left, you see a picture of the world's smallest snow person created by first graders for Principal Rivard during recess duty. They were very proud of their creation. On this slide, we have Discovery students who are participating in cardio drumming, which teaches counting, rhythm, balance, collaboration, and is just plain fun. Discovery teachers engaged in cardio drumming as well during a break from planning these past three days. Kindergarten enrollment, kindergarten and preschool enrollment began in earnest on January 25th. Welcome videos, along with virtual tours, are available on the district website under the enrollment tab, along with information about how to enroll. Families can enroll their children online at the welcome center, or they can pick up an enrollment packet at their school. Each elementary site had an evening designated either last week or this week for a drive-by enrollment event whereby families could come and sign up their child for preschool or pick up an enrollment packet for kindergarten. On this slide, you see Principal Rivard and Assistant Principal McVeigh at their respective sites during their drive-by events. Elementary teachers had the opportunity to engage in optional professional development during the three days of planning and preparation for in-person learning through a collaborative effort between learning and teaching, student services, and technology teams, as well as university partners from St. Ben, St. John's, and St. Cloud State. Our university partners provided professional development around using math manipulatives in the upper elementary grades. Other topics included a Sande refresher, Lexia resources, using STAR data to differentiate for math and literacy instruction, and integrating devices into in-person learning. Just under 200 attendees were at the seven sessions. Kiwanis is one of our amazing community partners whose mission is that of serving youth. Kiwanis is celebrating 100 years this year of serving the St. Cloud community and has a particularly long history of supporting Lincoln and Talahhi schools through the donation of time and money. The donation highlighted in these photos is part of Kiwanis donating 100 of something monthly to various organizations and entities throughout this year. In these pictures, you see Madison and Lincoln Elementary Schools, each receiving 50 books for their school libraries. And next, I'll turn it over to Dr. Putnam and Superintendent Jett.
Thank you so much, Dr. Weiss. And good evening. We are super excited to share with you a little bit about what's happening at our secondaries. Here you see a photo from our second first days of school. Our students had not been back since mid-October. So it was, there were a lot of emotions in our schools this week. And the primary one was excitement. And so it was really just a joy to see our kids back. On this next slide, you will see the South Tiger quilt. And last month, when we met, you heard from Principal Height Camp about self-commitment to developing students' social emotional learning skills and their tiger pride. What you can see here is an advisory activity where students use one page to show what it means to be a South Tiger to them. The school put all of the pages together in the cafeteria so that everyone got to see their thoughts, perspectives, and feelings all on the same display. And the week prior was DLA, our Dated Learning Academy's Spirit Week. They had a variety of activities. You can see here, they had special days each day of the week. So pajama day, creative lunch day, which sounds either a lot of fun or fairly terrifying. And then they also did some special speaker series. And here you can see at least one familiar face. Board member Zach Dorholtz joined this team in this chat for a conversation with our DLA students. And I know that they were deeply appreciative of Zach's time and the other adults who joined them in celebrating all of their hard work and efforts that they put forth this year. We wanted to feature a few of our standout artists from Apollo High School. And I'm going to speak about our students moving from my left to right. So our first student, Apollo sophomore Isabel Dom, is sharing her art with our community at Jewels Bistro. Apollo is creating a virtual art gallery using social media to share this experience with our entire school community. Isabel's an amazing artist. And for her class passion project, she has created 10 paintings that feature black musicians and how they've influenced her and made impacts on our society. Stay tuned for more details of the virtual gallery experiences. Isabel is one of three Apollo students who are named the Dexter R. Stanton MLK Art and Essay Contest winners. Other Apollo winners are Senior Catherine Blamow in the middle and Junior Asho Aden. This year's winners and entrants will participate in the MLK Everyday Art Residency with teaching artist Sarah Drake. During this year-long engagement on Martin Luther King Jr., students will learn about his life through art history, descriptive review of civil rights artwork, and exploration of multiple art mediums while learning art elements and principles. And next, we'll feature some of our standout musicians from Tech High School. We're excited to share that both the Tech Symphony and Tech Chamber orchestras are being showcased or recognized to perform at MMEA, the Minnesota Music Educators Association. Tech's orchestra teacher, Cara Mather, submitted some of the Tech Orchestra amateur video recordings to the MMEA for consideration to perform at this February State Midwinter Clinic, which is a large three-day clinic held at the Minneapolis Convention Center for all of the Minnesota music educators. They are also the organization that puts on all-state orchestra, band, and choir competitions. In late August, the Tech Orchestra program was selected to perform out of all of the secondary submissions in Minnesota. I just want to let that sit for a minute. All of the secondary submissions in Minnesota. And it's an enormous honor to be selected. Typically, the groups that selected would travel to the convention center to perform, but with COVID restrictions, the Midwinter Clinic has now been moved to a virtual session. And we would encourage everyone to tune in to watch the performance on February 11th at 11:45. And I'm sure you will be able to find that on the Tech website and our district website as well. And now we'll talk briefly about activities. Today was Signing Day, National Signing Day. And so you'll see our student athletes who signed. We celebrated them. From left to my left to right, you'll see Arasi Antsino, who is playing football at Ellsworth Community College, Gabby Frank, who's going to Anoka Ramsey Community College to play volleyball, Jacob Carroll, who is going to Central Lakes College where he'll play football, and Sam Brewer, who is going to Lawrence University where he will run cross-country. Tech also celebrated the National Signing Day. And their students, their students are a little bit hard to see, but I still want to make sure we recognize them. Isaac Siple will be playing football at Augustana. Lincoln Benson will play football at SMSU. Ashley Tarralli will be playing tennis at the College of St. Benedict. Matt Friesen will be playing baseball at Ohio University. And Tom Hoffman will be playing baseball at Ottawa University. And we want to say congratulations to our artists, our musicians, and our student athletes for all of the hard work that brought them to these moments. And we wish them all the best in their future. And I am now excited to turn the presentation over to Superintendent Jett to conclude our school's update.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam and Dr. Weiss. And so, Ryan, you can actually go to the next slide. So over 1,200 staff were scheduled for vaccine appointments over the past two weeks through the state pilot program, Stearns County, and the generous support of Centurion Care. All staff who indicated an initial interest were scheduled. Appointment scheduling is continuing throughout February as appointments become available. Initial rounds of vaccinations included district partners, including teachers on call, permanent guest, teachers, kid staff, kid stop staff, and Greater Minnesota Colake-located therapists. We will continue to include partners as we schedule additional appointments. And you can see on that screen, they did not know that was going to necessarily be there. But it's a thank you Tracy and Gary for your tireless work to make this tremendous opportunity possible. And so if you don't know, but I'm sure we all know, they've been on the phones on weekends, talking to staff, dealing with Centurion Care, dealing with state officials, just making sure that our 742 community is taken care of. So thank you. Next slide, Ryan. And now for the secondary learning model update. As you know, our commitment has always been to return all students to in-person learning as soon as it was safe to do so. Our preschool, elementary, and alternative special education schools began in-person learning today. And we are excited to share that tentatively, we will begin in-person learning for students in grades six through 12 at the start of third trimester. What does all that mean in terms of calendar events? The scheduling of events, February 26th. It's the end of trimester two. So March 1st through the 5th would be midwinter break. I'm looking at this because we were still in discussion with the, with our different bargaining units, about March 8th through the 10th being staff transition days, which is required by the Minnesota Department of Education. And I know that Dr. Putnam and Tracy will correct me when I'm done with this or say that I'm correct with that. And then March 11th will be the tentative start to in-person learning for grades six through 12. Please note, there are no changes for preschool, elementary, and alternative special education schools. Our secondary distance learning academy will also have March 8th through the 10th off, but are not impacted in any other way. Our secondary schools, I need to say this again, our secondary schools have not been in session Monday through Friday since last March. And we're excited to make this return. Our school and the district administrators are collaborating and partnering with building leadership teams to ensure we provide a safe and healthy learning environment. And we will share frequent, timely communication with students, families, and staff in the upcoming weeks. And our community can also expect an update from me at the next Board of Education meeting on February 17th. Questions? And so I'm looking for Lori Putnam and Tracy about the, making sure that clarification of March 8th through the 10th. I know that we did three days as it relates to elementary, but I know that there was a two-day moment, so I'm just confirming that.
Correct. It is eight and nine that we are off, and we come back on the 10th.
Okay, so the transition day, so according to that slide, everybody needs to say it. Oh, see, it's in my notes, so I'm the one that's incorrect. The, in my notes, it is March 8th and 9th are the staff transition days, and we come back to school on March 10th. And so you heard me say March 11th? Nope, that was in my own notes that I had written down. It's staff transition days of the 8th and 9th. And the tentative, you're putting it back up on the screen. Thank you. And so there it is, March 8th and 9th are the staff transition days. And then March 10th would be the tentative to in-person learning for grades six through 12. Thank you, Ryan. Any questions from the board?
Anybody have any questions? Or comments? Al?
It sure will be nice to get our high school back.
I do have a comment, and it has nothing to do with the update there, really. But I've been watching the meeting tonight, and I know everybody's got a different background this time. And it looks great, by the way. It looks a lot better than that horizon that we used to have behind us. This one ties into the district theme. But just overall, back when I first got on the board, one of the things that I was, that I really pushed for and believed in really strongly was, and wanted to have discussions about was marketing and branding and communications. And at that time, we did not have a marketing team. We didn't have a marketing department. We didn't have a communications department. Everything was handled directly by the superintendent. And we had every school in the district doing their own thing. We had multiple platforms that we were working on. Every school had its own colors and different look, and nothing tied back in at all. And when I look at things now, and when I watch presentations like I've seen tonight, and when I see things like the videography that we've been doing within the district and the recording of different presentations and the recordings that we make of different training sessions, things like that. And then I see, I saw some reference tonight to virtual tours of schools that never used to exist, but now any family can explore any school at any time of day or night, at least for an initial exploratory review. Our presentations are very consistent in format, and we can use them over and over again. Our social media follows the same format, the same consistency. It's drawing us together as a district. Our signage within the district, and now with our electronic signs, which have improved tremendously just in the last month. But the messaging and the look and the feel of those signs, the backgrounds on this meeting. And then even to just the efforts that take place to record and, and livestream meetings and recording those meetings and being able to view them and replay them later. It's just, it's just all come together so well. And I just was kind of thinking about, wow, where would we be right now if we didn't have the team that was dedicated to this? When you think of all of the time and effort that goes into the things that are happening, but look at the results that we're getting because of it. And we have a library of information, and we have a library of videos that we can use for training that nobody else has because we developed them ourselves, and they're directly for our use. And I just wanted to give kudos to the team that's doing this because they're drawing, they're really pulling it all together and creating a brand. And that was what I was hoping and dreaming for years ago.
Al, can I make a, can I add on to that real quick?
You sure can.
So I want to say thank you for that. If you're looking at people on the screen, there's one person, she's probably wiping her eyes and got with her glasses and things like that, and that's Tammy Deland. And so just a great shout out, thank you, Al, from a board perspective and just a community perspective for Tammy and her team. And I also want to say, and I need to say thank you to the board for that support because there's teamwork that goes into what you're describing, Al. Whether it's looking at the signage, and there's board members, Al, and others that have, that have been talking about marketing, and the entire board has different thoughts about it. And so I just want to say that it's a entire, it's a group effort and glad to be part of it. But thank you for acknowledging that, Al. Tammy's, Tammy and her department, they do some amazing things and don't always get the kudos for that. So thank you. And Al, thank you for, and the board, for keeping us to have that, so that we're diligent as it relates to that.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Monica?
Well, thank you all for bringing that up. The, of course, the presentations and the puppies, not, not in there. Couldn't finish that one. I'd like to have a little bit of more of the emotions about, if you two, Lori and Marsha, could please tell me a little bit more about, what was the first week of school for the kiddos? What did you hear from kiddos and from teachers about being the first, the first coming back together in person?
Do you want me to start, Ryan? I made it to all the buildings today, and I got lots of appreciation from teachers in terms of having the opportunity to have days to plan and prepare. And they, they were very grateful for that. They, the students, the comments I heard today, many revolved around just the fact that we're all together, especially for our third through fifth grade students who have been coming to school every other day, who are now all together in the classroom. And for them, it's particularly fun to be together with all of their classmates. And they're no longer separated by a day in between. And so I was hearing lots of comments, particularly from our third through fifth grade students, about being able to be together. Teachers just readjusting in terms of reminding everyone of expectations. It felt almost like the first day of school again, especially for our third through fifth grade students. But lots of joy, lots of happiness. But lots of joy, lots of happiness and just lots of gratitude for bringing everyone back to in-person learning today.
Our secondaries have been out longer and we have not yet been in person this year. So for us, it was really a mixture of emotions and, and conversations that I heard. Without doubt, we were all glad to be there. Our students were glad. I was at McKinley today and asked a couple of students who came in, just kind of joking, do you miss us? And, and they were both like, yeah, we did. And they don't know, they didn't know me from anybody, but they, they were genuinely glad to be back and, and being in classrooms, watching students, working with teachers. They were able to do some of the, the work that, that just needed to be done in person. They were balancing chemical equations, which honestly I didn't know was a thing until I watched that classroom in McKinley today and they were doing, and, and the, the interactions, the instructional interactions that were happening were just really special. There was also some anxiety. There were students, I was at TAC on Monday and there were some students who didn't know where their classes were because their classes changed since they went last. So they were entering, trying to find classrooms that they had never yet been to. How do they use the gym? How do they use the locker rooms? Where are the locker rooms? So truly for our, our students, it really was another first day when they did change classes and, and finally got to see their teachers in person again, or meet their teachers in person for the first time. By the end of the day, when I saw kids leaving, the shoulders were down a little bit more. I saw some more smiles than maybe I had seen in the morning, once that anxiety or, or newness had worn off. And now we are, we are going, now we're on a roll. Because now we've done, we've done our, our periods one, two and heading into four, five, six. And so it's really an exciting time for all of us to be back.
Thank you. No more questions?
Somebody else? Okay, we're good. Next up, discussion about priorities for existing bond funds presented by Amy Scalerud, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services.
Thank you Chair Hawes. I'm just waiting for Ryan to get the presentation loaded. So what we're looking at, and just to give some backstory, we have two bond accounts right now that have funds remaining in them. And so we've been reviewing this information at the Board Finance Committee meeting. And what Board Finance Committee requested was that administration meet and put together sort of a priority list, if you will, that we could bring forward to the board in terms of what potential things might be out there as, as needs. One thing that, that cabinet, or sorry, that Finance Committee did specifically have a conversation around is the fact that really what we bring forward in terms of priorities for remaining bond funds should be things where there's no other funding source available. So we've exhausted all other options or it's been out there as an identified need for a number of years. But there, there's just really no other funding source. So we don't want to be including things that could potentially be funded through CARES funding as one-time costs or things that could be LTFM eligible. If you want to go to the next slide, Ryan. So what we're looking at in terms of amounts available. So there's the 2015 B bonds. The year correlates with the year they were issued, so those were issued in 2015. There is just under 1.4 million. Kind of with an asterisk, we'll get to that. When I say there, there is, this was put together and presented to Finance Committee prior to us closing on the new building that we just purchased. And so those funds really no longer exist, but we've included it here just as an awareness that that was kind of the highest priority and we'll get to that in a minute. The second bond that we have funds in is 2017B. And there's an estimated 2.8 million remaining in that bond account. That's an estimated because we still have some, some cleanup payments and some other items that, that haven't yet to settle up 100%. But that's a conservative estimate. So at a minimum, that would be 2.8 remaining in that account. Next slide, Ryan. So an administration meant to review identified priorities. The first priority, which has really been a priority for both administration and the board, there's been an awareness for a number of years now that we need a permanent home for Riverwoods. As we all know, that property was listed for sale and our lease was terminated. And the board did approve the purchase of the new building, which we're sort of informally referring to as the Anderson Building because it's on Anderson Avenue, until we can go through the formal board process to name the building. So that purchase was approved on January sixth at the board meeting. And so that really uses all of the, the 1.4 million in funds that were remaining in the 2015B bond account as well as some other reserve funds that were approved by the board when the purchase agreement was approved. And so there's some assigned fund balance and operating capital reserves that were a part of that purchase as well. And for those who aren't aware, we did officially close on the building last Thursday. Next slide. The next item that was identified as a priority and again has been something that is not new to board discussion is the remainder of the school entrance projects. To put secure school entrances on all of our buildings was originally included as part of the 2015 referendum. Those amounts were then removed prior to the 2016 referendum with a commitment on the part of the district to explore other funding options. Since then, through a variety of funding sources, some have been out of reserve fund, funds. Some have been as part of new construction. One was a school safety grant we were awarded. But we have completed those entrance projects at most of our buildings with the exception of five buildings. And so Oak Hill, Tullahi and Discovery, which are really functionally all the same layout and design, Clearview and then Apollo. Next slide. The next priority that was identified is upgrading the alarm and door access systems. And so all of our technology systems, this has been a common theme in terms of identifying funds. We've done the phone system, we've done the security cameras. And so this is basically the last piece of those technology systems that needs to be upgraded. Those technology systems are not an LTFM eligible cost. And so there's really no other funding sources available to support technology systems. We already have installed the new systems at Tech, the District Administrative Office and Coreyview when those projects were completed. And then the system that remains at our other buildings is outdated, it's nearing end of life and will very soon no longer be able to be supported. And so upgrading that will provide for one consistent system throughout the district. And it's really upgrading essentially the, the bones of the system. If in the future we wanted to explore different avenues or upgrade the system, this would allow us to do that in the future. Next slide. The next one is also another one that has been on the radar for a number of years, at, at least five years, if not more, is the parking and bus drop-off and pickup situation at South. So there's really kind of two primary issues. There's not enough parking. And so that causes us to have to utilize off-street parking, which is not preferable either by the neighborhood or for staff. And then there's also a need right now to separate where the buses drop from where the visitors and student drop-off and pickup are for safety reasons. Apollo Music Space is the next item. This has come up recently and, and become an issue that's something that as we've been doing our fine arts review, has come to the forefront. With the current space, we really only have two dedicated rooms for music space at Apollo. The plans for a future referendum would have three permanent spaces. However, that requires some significant renovations. But in the meantime, we do have a potential space identified within the building that we could dedicate a third space. However, there would be some modifications primarily with instrument storage and acoustical upgrades that would be necessary to make that a space appropriate for, for music so that we would have a dedicated space for each of the three program areas. Next slide. Flexible furniture for Apollo and Tech has also come up and been identified as a priority. For Apollo, it's primarily to, to have some upgraded and more flexible furniture in the commons or cafeteria area. And then also that entry area. So if you're familiar with Apollo, as you enter, there's a, a very large area that right now really isn't very functional. And so the, the goal would be to have some flexible informal learning spaces or furniture for added to those spaces. And then in addition, and this was one of the things that was discussed at Board Finance Committee, is that we may have a need at Tech for some additional flexible furniture in some of those common areas as well. Right now, and when we start to get later in the presentation, when we talk about timing, Principal Harris hasn't actually been in the building as it's ever been fully functional with full student capacity. And so we've had some preliminary meetings with him about what those needs may be. But that's one where we need some more time to assess so that he can hopefully at some point in the, in the future, if all goes as planned, to be able to have the building functioning at full capacity and, and be able to make some recommendations. The next item is the Discovery Walking Path. And so there's, if you're not familiar with what this is, there is a path behind Discovery that goes through the neighborhood or through the playground area and connects to the neighborhood. The current path is not contiguous. It ends at the tennis courts and then it doesn't connect a full loop to the neighborhood and, and both the neighborhood and the building have requested for a number of years that we complete the path. It, it really, when we did the Coreyview project and relocated the tennis courts, the path was extended to the tennis courts, but not connecting to the rest of the path. And because it's a new path or an extension of the path, again, this isn't something that would be eligible for our LTFM funds. And from a building standpoint, there are some instructional benefits to this as well. Right now, when we have the bike grant go from school to school, they don't have a, a nice continuous loop to be able to do that as effectively as possible. Next slide. And then the last two items are some landscaping needs. The immediate need is at Discovery Oak Hill and Tullahi, along the front of those buildings, really across the whole front of them. In front of the windows are large planters that are currently overgrown and, and need some significant work to repair and get cleaned out. And so that's an immediate need and the cost of that, which we'll get to here shortly, is really an amount in excess of what our annual kind of allocated grounds budget would be able to absorb. And then the last item is digital signs. As Al referred to, we've been able to put digital signs in a number of our buildings. And we've been able to use LTFM funds to replace those at buildings where they already had signs. However, we have some buildings that don't currently have a sign at all. And so the way the LTFM funds work is if you don't have a sign, you can't use LTFM funds to install a new sign if there isn't already an existing sign to replace. And so some additional work needs to be done in terms of what buildings and some are in residential neighborhoods and we have some restrictions potentially with city requirements. And so we're, we're not listing specific buildings, but more just giving kind of a ballpark allocation in terms of what Finance Committee thought would potentially be necessary to complete the, the remaining of the buildings. Next slide. So when we start talking about costs, and again, these are essentially in what Cabinet identified as priority order. Especially with the first, the first slide, as we get towards the end, they're, they're kind of all similar priority level. And all of these are, are items that Cabinet has expressed a need to do either immediately or within the next one to two-year timeframe. So the Discovery Oak Hill and Tullahi entrances, again, those are all three, the same building layouts. That's why it's the same cost for each. Those are estimated at $190,000 each. And because it's the same layout, those would be bid as, as one package, the same contractor would do all three. The Clearview Entrance Project is estimated at $500,000. That's a little bit more constant, cost prohibitive, just because it requires a significant relocation of the main office versus some relatively simple modifications like the other three. Alarm and Door Access Systems is $235,000. The South Parking Drop-Off and Pickup is listed here at $675,000. However, the total project cost, which also includes resurfacing some tennis courts, is actually 1.7 million. There's a lot of work that needs to be done there. However, a lot of that is overlay of existing parking lots. And that's LTFM eligible and is already factored into our LTFM budget. The part that is not LTFM eligible is some of the redesign of, of the bus entrance as well as the expansion of parking. Anytime we're going to do significant additions of lots, that portion cannot be paid for out of LTFM. Apollo Music Space, we're still waiting to get formal pricing, but we're estimating that at $50,000. Next slide, Ryan. Flexible furniture for Apollo, they have worked with the furniture consultants. And we have an estimate of $200,000 for that. And then again, at this point, Tech hasn't identified anything. But what Finance Committee proposed was giving an allocation so that when Principal Harris is at a point where he's ready to, to make some recommendations, there would be a budget available to get those orders placed. The Discovery Walking Path is a relatively small project that's $20,000. The landscaping for the planners at the three schools is $75,000. And then our best estimate on what would potentially be needed for remaining digital signs is approximately $200,000. So the grand total of what Cabinet's identified as priorities is $2,625,000. And again, the current remaining amount is estimated conservatively to be 2.8 million. Next slide. In terms of timing, ideally based on feedback from, from building and administration, the majority of these would be projects this spring and summer pending board approval. And so that would be the, the entrances at Discovery Oak Hill and Tullahi, the alarm and door access systems, the South Parking Drop-Off and Pickup, the Apollo Music Space, the Walking Path, landscaping and Apollo's flexible furniture. The two, two of these would require, would require bids. That would be the, the entrance projects and then the South Parking. And timing on those would be within the next two to three months, looking to bring those to the board. If the board approves to move forward with summer, some of those projects. Next slide. And then the Clearview Entrance Project, Administration is recommending not doing that this summer. We, we do have current design that was done a, a number of years ago. However, it really doesn't solve, it, it really doesn't solve the same issue that we have at South where it doesn't separate that traffic flow between buses and parent drop-off and visitors. And so we think that we need to do some more work with that in terms of exploring other options potentially for locating the office. And we have a similar problem at Clearview as we do at Tech because we have a new principal who really hasn't, again, up until this week, been in the building, operating at full capacity. And so that's one where both Cabinet and the principal agree that we should take some time to explore options and then look at doing that as a summer of 22 project. And then kind of to be determined would be the tech furniture, once we can have some recommendations made on that. And then again, the signs, timing of that will partially, would partially be dependent on And then again, the signs, timing of that will partially, would partially be dependent on city approval. We've got multiple cities that we're working with on the remaining buildings and looking at what we have for sign ordinances, neighborhoods and and all of that. So that is what I have in terms of identified priorities. I think, so we'll open it up for discussion or questions and then we can talk about next steps and and timing after that.
Scott?
Yes, you had indicated there was two bond funds. One was 2015, the other was 2017. Where did these two funds come from? Were they the Tech High School Funds? Or please fill me in.
So the 2015 bond is actually what's called a capital bond. It comes from our existing capital levy authority. And so there's no, there's no tax impact from that bond. Those funds remained. Originally, they were scheduled to be used for the HVAC projects that were approved. There was multiple funding sources as we started doing the HVAC projects back in 2015 at a number of the schools. And in a number of those years, we had unspent funds in our long-term facilities maintenance budget where we were able to utilize those funds for portions of the HVAC projects at those schools as opposed to the 2015B bond funds, because we know the H or the LTFM funds are use it or lose it. If we don't use it at the end of the year, there's a levy adjustment and the state takes those funds back. So that's where the 2015B bonds came from. The 2017B bonds, those are the voter-approved bonds from the tech project.
Are we allowed to use that money on places other than tech?
Yes, so any capital bond that's that's issued can be used as long as it's a capital cost. So you can't use those funds for salaries or operating costs, but they can be used on any capital facility need throughout the district. So for example, when the Kennedy School was completed, there was a significant amount of funds remaining and a similar process was gone through at that time to identify priorities. And those funds were used throughout the district.
Is there any need at tech that would have priority, for example, a fourth learning pod?
So any, any needs at tech that have been identified that are within the available funds. So to add a fourth learning community would be significantly more than the 2.8 million dollars remaining. And so we have made sure to, you know, we're we're a full year and a half into the school being open and we do still have some funds being held in reserve for equipment that's already factored into that amount because things continue to come up and we do still have a few contracts where there's, there's still haven't been closed out and there's still some retainage and some unresolved things to close those out. And so that's all been factored in already in terms of whether there's still funds that may be needed at at the actual tech site itself.
Do we even have the demand for a fourth pod?
At this point, enrollment has not enrollment. So when the school first opened last year, we were starting to approach that. However, there was a significantly larger senior class last year that graduated out. And so now we're we're down to enrollment numbers that that really don't have that as an immediate need, no.
Thank you.
Al?
Yep, I have one comment and one question. A comment is just, and Scott, this is kind of to yours, that some of this, some of the money that was left over from Tech came because we had favorable interest rates in the money. Once we got the bond funds and we deposited them into the bank, we earned more interest on those, on those funds than we anticipated. And so that gave us some surplus dollars to work with that actually carried through. So this, I mean, it's a real positive thing that we have these funds left. The other part of it came from bids coming in under budget. Gary, I have a question for you. On the South Junior High, just a quick question, and part of this, the others here didn't have the opportunity to have, take part in the discussion we had before this meeting on what that might look like. But I just have a question as to what you were talking about with the bus chute and where it would exit or where they'd exit and go out to as a university that runs there. Is that, is that a stoplight at that intersection or is it a four-way stop or is there no traffic controls coming from side to side?
So the, the, the way the one-way works and for the remainder of the board, what we're talking about would be the, the north side of, of, of South, if that makes sense. The, the roads have been reconfigured and so if, if you were leaving the existing staff parking lot over by the tennis courts, that's now a one-way and then the one-way goes around. You have to take a left and then the the light is, is one block over.
Are you talking about 14th Avenue? The light is on 14th, I think, and that gets bottlenecked in there.
Yeah, and so.
I have no idea.
So, so buses leaving would leave, I believe it's on 15th and then they would, you know, make two turns to get onto 14th. But we, we have a number of buses that would, would go out and they would take a right to go, to go east on University. And we have other buses that would that would exit going out towards Washington Memorial Drive. So it wouldn't be all the buses going to that one intersection.
Is it the plan? Does it ultimately, it's just directional or are you taking moving tennis courts and taking some of the field space away or to get more parking?
So we haven't, we have some preliminary plans. The, the plan with those is to bring those actual detailed plans to Board Finance Committee next week. And then we would bring those actual plans to the board at the next meeting or whenever they'd be taking action on the approval, because there's obviously no action this evening. But we want to make sure that we review that information and get feedback from Board Finance Committee first. So in terms of timing on the two large projects, so that would be the South modifications and then the Entrance Projects. We wouldn't just put those on a consent agenda for a call for bids. We would have that be an actual presentation and discussion action item to the board to share what that whole plan looks like, along with maps and visuals and and all of that. So that's, that's yet to come, but we want to give an awareness of of what that potential cost would be. And just to make sure that the board essentially kind of has the nod for us to move forward with continuing drawings and presenting those plans to Finance Committee next week.
I guess I got lost in the, there was two price tags on South Parking. And one was listed there and included in the total. And then you mentioned a significantly higher price tag. Where was that money coming from?
So the difference of the total project cost is about 1.7 million. The amount that was listed in terms of being a priority for the bond spending is about 675,000. The remainder, so about a million, is LTFM eligible because it's repaving where there's existing pavement and repaving existing tennis courts. It's, it's work that is qualified for LTFM. So I didn't want to confuse the fact that the total project cost on here, because then we would be looking at an amount in excess of what is available in terms of bond funds. So what would need to come from the bond funds would be the 675,000.
Thank you. Natalie? Zach? Can I ask, what didn't make the list that you're like, oh, really, if we had more money or we could push it a little bit farther? What? What did you have to table?
There were some items in terms of technology and things for classrooms where we think that we potentially, in our second round of CARES funds, have some, some options for still being able to do those and utilize other funding. And so that was one item that when we looked at at priorities and particularly based on Finance Committee's directive to say, let's really narrow this down to things that we have no other funding source. So really, the other items that were on the list are things that we have other funding and there wasn't, there really weren't very many. Like I said, the classroom technology was, was really the big one. And we're still exploring that as a potential item that that could have a tie-in because part of the need is COVID-related with having students part being in the classroom and some at home and those transitions. And so we really, we didn't have Cabinet, again, had a very kind of short list because a lot of these things are the things that have been on the, the needs list for, for years, but there's really just been no money available to fund them.
One more question. Can you compare the music space at Tech versus the music space at Apollo? I know the price wasn't that significant. It was probably one of these smaller priced projects on there. But you mentioned three spaces. Is that choir, orchestra, band? Is that the three spaces you're talking about?
Yes. And so this is just to add the third space. By no means is this going to necessarily be apples to apples in terms of what Tech currently has, because to do that requires some significant some significant modifications and additions and and things that would be part of a referendum. So this is really a short-term solution, which is why you see a relatively small amount because there's, there's really no way prior to a referendum in terms of available funds to do that comparably with what we have at Tech. That, that part will have to be included with the referendum. But at a minimum, we want to make sure that until referendum, each of the three programs, band, choir and orchestra, has a dedicated space so that they're not trying to share space or use, you know, a room that's not acoustically appropriate for music. So this is really a temporary solution, if you will.
Has Apollo never had that? Did they have it at one time and then it had to be taken for something else or?
So I believe, I believe part of that has to do with some of the changes in, in scheduling. And I don't know, Lori, if you want to add anything in terms of what periods music is offered, as we've made some changes in the secondary schedule. They used to be able to share the space and now the scheduling has become more complex where sharing space is really, and it probably wasn't ever functionally the best option. I'm sure it wasn't preferable while they were doing it. But it's become next to impossible with our current scheduling demands.
I think the only thing I would add to that is that it impacts the feeder schools because we will often share one or more of our music faculty with North or Kennedy. And so as we tighten up the availability of, of rooms when we can schedule at Apollo, now it also impacts the master schedules and the availability of rooms and, and offerings at Kennedy and North as well. And for our students who are taking specialized courses such as immersion and a music course or, and an AP course, the more of those, of those specialized classes we get, the the greater benefit it is to be able to offer those classes of a variety of periods rather than to be limited to just one or two. Otherwise, we have students blocked out of the, the offerings.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just want to add that it was a discussion we had at Finance Committee, but the Apollo, the flexible furniture for Apollo for those areas could also be something that would be included in a levy if we were to do, or in a referendum, if we were to do a referendum. However, and when we brought that up, so it'd be a second way to be able to finance that. So maybe those funds could be available for something else. But the the administration felt that the furniture would have immediate use. Apollo would be able to use that flexible furniture immediately because it's going to be the lunchroom, the the entrance way. And wasn't it also in the commons area? And to be able to use it for educational purposes and small group breakouts starting immediately, which put them, would put them more on the level with Tech. And then it would reduce the need for a referendum by whatever we would invest into that right now because that furniture, anything that they purchase right now would be consistent with what they would purchase in a referendum. So it would, it would be a reduction in the referendum, so.
Correct.
I've seen some of the furniture at Apollo and the community ought to be impressed with how many years we got out of it.
So yeah, I wanted to add to that, that for one, yeah, the furniture at Apollo is just, is, is, is just getting there, right? And then in the, in the, in the other thing that you were asking about the needs of the, what other needs are there? We have huge needs. I mean, I think that this is the, the, the amount of things that we could get with that budget because the needs that we have are huge. We have needs for classroom space. We have needs for, for modifications of buildings, for, for stability in buildings. So these are, these are things that if, if, I mean, isn't that right, Amy? Can you make a comment on that?
Absolutely. These were, what we were asked to do is identify priorities. Obviously, if we were asked to identify every need or, or want, that list would have been millions and millions of dollars. But we know that that's not, that's not a realistic ask. And so when we say what didn't make the list, I think there was also an awareness that items that weren't really urgent need right now or were more of a want than a need weren't even put on the list because there, there's an awareness that we have a limited budget to work with. But absolutely, those, those needs are there. Those needs are always there. But, but this is kind of the condensed list of what, what is critical now and most important and most urgent.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Amy.
So in, just in terms of next steps, what we would generally do, just because some of these are kind of allowances, but I want to make sure that we have formal board approval, obviously, before we would spend any funds because none of this is in the approved budget. And so right now the, the district really doesn't have any authority to spend these funds without board approval. So what we would look to do for next steps is probably bring an item to the meeting on the 17th with just a general approval based on the amounts that we were presented tonight, unless we have feedback between now and then, and we'll have Finance Committee next week review and solidify that in terms of making that recommendation. So that we would have kind of a, a general approval of the list of projects. And then once that approval is done, again, certain projects that are over, that bid requirement would also come forward at a later date. And then we would also, like I mentioned previously, bring the details with drawings to the board at that next meeting for both the South Project as well as the Controlled Entrances at the three schools that would be done this summer.
Okay. Sounds like you have everybody on board here. Okay, next up, item E, Proposed Revised Board Policy 421. Again, presented by Amy Scalero, who's the Director of Finance and Business Services.
I'm up again, and I'll wait for Ryan to get it presented because there's only one change. And so otherwise, I'll be done before he, before he even gets it on the screen. Board Policy 421 is our policy that relates to gifts to district personnel. Our policy is basically in a line, in alignment with MSBA's policy. There's only one change being proposed and it's at the top of the second page in the definitions. And again, this is based on MSBA revising their policy to add a definition for financial interest. The term financial interest is used elsewhere in the policy and so they've added that definition. And that is the only change. Are there any questions?
Yep.
Can you read it, please? It's just hard to see on the screen. Can we blow it up so I can see?
So it's defining financial interest. And it says financial interest means any ownership or control in an asset which has the potential to produce a monetary return. And so I suspect that because it's referred to as, financial interest is referred to elsewhere in the policy, that, that otherwise, if not explicitly defined, can be open to interpretation about what one person might consider a financial interest compared to another. And so that was added to the MSBA sample policy just for clarification purposes.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, thanks, Amy. And last up tonight, item F, Proposed Revised Board Policy 534, presented tonight by Gary Ganji, Executive Director of Operations.
Good evening, everyone. So Policy 534 is our unpaid meal charges policy. And like Amy, I have very minor changes this evening, only, only two changes. The, this policy also aligns very, very closely, almost identically with the MSBA model policy. The, the, the first change would be in Roman numeral three B, where it says families will be notified of a low account balance once the balance in the account reaches $4.99 or less. We would, we are proposing that that, we raise that from $4.99 to $10. And that would, that would actually align with our current practice. That's what we have our, our auto dialer set at. And, and the reason being, it allows families a little bit of leeway. They, they don't get that notice the, the day the student is out of lunch money. So it just provides a little cushion there. And then the, the second change would be under Roman numeral four. And it's an ad and it's item E. And, and this ad is, is again recommended by MSBA. It's related to a binding written opinion issued by the Minnesota Attorney General in, in May of 19. And the, the added language would be, "The school district may not deny any student the opportunity to participate in graduation ceremonies or other commencement activities due to unpaid meal charges." And this has been our practice, longstanding practice. It just puts it in policy. And then the, the only other thing I'd like to point out, it's not a change, but it is different from the MSBA policy. And that's also in Roman numeral four C, where it says negative balance of more than $100 not paid prior to the end of the school year may be turned over to the superintendent or superintendent's designee. MSBA uses the word "will" instead of "may." We've always used "may" because it allows for some discretion depending upon family circumstances. Any questions?
Natalie?
Yeah, thanks, Gary, for addressing C because I, B through D that you're talking about there and four doesn't really sit right with me. And here, here's kind of where I'm coming from. Could we, as a district, I know in businesses, when you have unpaid debts, you can write them off at the end of the year? Is that an option for us with unpaid debts for lunch accounts?
Amy, you want to respond to that one or you want me to?
Um, yeah, I can respond. It, it is, and it's, it's actually something that we already do in practice. And so there's a number of different circumstances that would, that would trigger that. Well, for example, if a, a family qualifies for free and reduced lunch this year and they didn't last year, oftentimes we'll forgive that. Or if a family is significantly behind and has financial hardship, we may set up a payment plan and forgive part. We also have angel funds that we use to, to cover. So we, we explore a variety of ways, but certainly we, we have that awareness and we'll always work with, with the family if, if we need to, to do that. So we, there's nothing statutorily that, that doesn't allow us to, that says that we have to. And that's part of the reason, like Gary said, that we want our policy to say that, that we may and not will. Because we know that we have that reality for our families. And a lot of times, we, we do make those accommodations.
About how many lunch accounts are we sending to collections yearly?
We actually, to date, have never sent one to collections.
Oh, praise the Lord.
Yeah, we really, we really try to, to, to have that be a, a personal outreach, whether it be through the school facilitator or through our nutritional services office here. And again, set up payment plans or work with the family to, to get that figured out. So we want to leave it in the policy that we, we could if there were certainly, you know, a, a situation that warranted it or, you know, or, or something. But to date, we've never felt the need to do that. And our, our preference would always be to not. But again, because MSBA has it in their policy, we want to keep it in our policy as an option.
Okay. I'm really glad to hear that we've never done that. I guess I can't think of a, of a time when we, if we aren't doing it now, what would be a time that we do it? What would be an example?
So, you know, if, for example, we had a, a family that wasn't in financial hardship and we knew that it was an intentional abuse of the system, where there really was no financial need, but they, they know and they have an awareness or some, something to that effect where, where it's really an intentional, you know, kind of not, not a hardship-related negative balance, but, but somebody who potentially would have the means or, or has explicitly said, I, I can afford to pay, but I'm willingly not. That happening, but you never know. And so just, you know, in the event that, and that's why we haven't ever had one that we need to send. We just.
Yeah. Les wants to comment on that.
Okay, I think you're.
Oh, wait, will you turn on your mic?
I'm concerned about disqualification. And I, I get it, I don't, if we've never done it, and if that were going to be an issue, I assume that's going to start with the superintendent. And I'm, we're putting Amy on the spot right now where she's trying to figure out in what situation we would do that. And I think that's unfair to her. I think that's a district decision and, and we've never done it. And I'm assuming it's not going to occur. But if it comes up, it'll probably come here first to the board. So I think if we can get Amy out of that bracket right there, because I think that's not a good place for her to be. So that's all. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt any more than that.
Can I, when a child walks through to go and put, enter their number in or tell the, the lunch lady their number and there's no money in the account? Can you walk me through that process of, you know, is it like when I swipe my debit card and I don't have money in there and it says denied? What happens? Does, is it, is it denied? Is it, does the lunch lady see negative $5.30? What, what happens?
They, they, they would, they would see that there isn't money in there. But the, the practice is every student gets a meal and it's the same meal every other student gets. It's, it's not, you get a peanut butter sandwich because you didn't have lunch money. You get the same meal as the student going through before you and after you. And there's, there's continual training with staff. We, we monitor that. We, we just, we don't want to shame any student.
So are the lunch ladies telling my, my children have high anxiety? They're old now, so they're in college. But this would cause high anxiety to them to, Mom, did you have money to put in my lunch account? Well, no, maybe on Friday. But is somebody going to say something to them about that? And so what do we do there?
The, the notification could, should come through the, the auto dialer. And, and if that's happening anywhere, we would like to know because it's, we, we don't want it to happen at that point of sale.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry. Who else has something?
I wasn't actually done with my questions.
Yeah, don't, go ahead.
Okay. So what I'm concerned about is there's the reality of some families in our district that will tell specifically high schoolers, don't, you can't eat today because I don't have any money to put in that account. And then if, I'm thinking about being trauma-informed as a district. And if I know I'm in a financially hard place and I read this that says I could be sent to collections, knowing in practice, we don't do that because of course we don't because that's not who we are as a district to, to be punitive, you know, for a $5.99 lunch or whatever. But I, what I'm concerned about is the fact that there are parents that tell their kids not to eat because they don't have the money. And I know that that isn't how we practice it in schools. So it's not the schools that are doing anything wrong. I'm always just aware of what could be seen by a parent to then say, I need you not to eat. Because we, there's students that are told that that's what happens. So that's why I'm being sensitive, super sensitive about this.
Thank you.
They get a notification at $10, correct?
Correct.
So that's what they would see that would notify them that there's no money left in the lunch account, right? Is that what you were asking, Natalie?
No, I'm asking for the reality of some parents who just can't pay. And then if they would see this policy and it says they're going to be sent to collections, then what would that make, mean for them to do? Would it then exacerbate the fact, fact that we do have students that are told not to eat?
If the policy said next to that, if you are a struggling parent that doesn't have money, you should reach out to such and such. I don't know who it is, the principal.
May I?
Yeah, please.
So Natalie, I understand you're concerned. What I don't see is a solution within the policy. So kind of very directly about it, are you suggesting that we strike out that, that, that paragraph? Is, is that what your suggestion is? Or maybe can we just think about it for the second reading a little bit more and maybe have more conversation within the committee about it? Personally, in my personal opinion, I, I would not agree with striking out the paragraph. And I don't know how to fix it in a way that is more explicit, that is more, that, that can explain better and address your concern. And also wondering if that conversation is more about practice and what is in the, not, not that much what is the policy, but what is in the notifications that we do and how do we do that? Since I, in my, in, in my experience, there are very few parents that actually go to the policy to check on those things. They are, they're more going into the, the, what is the notification that they're getting or what is the thing, the conversation directly that they have with the staff. So it's, it's just, I, I, I will call them policy nerds, the ones that I go there because, because that's how they tell, they, they have approached me in this, in this sense when people actually ask me about the policies. So, so in that specific language, I am not that picky about the policy because that has been my experience, might not be your experience or the experience of others. So maybe we can check on that. But that's kind of what I can offer about how can we go into the discussion? I don't know if you want to go more discussion right now, but I don't see what else we can do at this point with this specific line.
Yeah, I don't think there's actually anything to do right at this time. I would personally like to see B through D never there. But for, in my personal life, but in the professional life of the, of the school district, given the caveat that Amy shared with us, I understand that. And so, you know, to, for me to understand practice versus what is, is in cold policy language was my main concern today. And Amy and Gary, thank you for sharing those, those things with me. And I, I'm done talking about it. Thank you, Monica.
And the one thing I would add too, when, when our facilitators or our nutritional services office are, are contacting parents to work with them on collection, they're not calling them and, and threatening to send it to collection. So by no means are they trying to use that as, as a factor to, to collect payment. Those calls are, are very much about how can we work with you? What can we do? You know, maybe complete a new free and reduced application if your circumstances have changed. And I know that doesn't catch everyone because there's some people who fall in that, that, that bubble just above those thresholds. But by no means are we, we're using that as a scare tactic or threatening that to our families either. So just an awareness that our families probably, like Monica said, unless they're actually reading the policy, probably don't have any awareness that that's even a possibility.
Thanks, Amy.
Yeah, I just assumed, I just assumed have the paragraph there in case we have people that work the system. There are some people who work the system who can pay, but just choose not to. At least have something.
Well, I'd like you to join in. Seth? Well, thank you for being so sensitive to this topic and getting as many kids lunches as we can. So thanks. And that's it. That concludes our work session. It's 9:38 PM. Have a good night.